Call to order the Village Board of Trustees meeting of October 28, 2025. Roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Trundle.
Here.
Rooney. Here. All right, if we could stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Lucy, proof of posting, please.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Center, Badger Bank, the post office, and our website.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to number five, our first public comment. Do we have any public comments? Rules of public comment, as you know, just state your name and address, come up here, and you've got three minutes.
Now, is this a public comment? Oh, you're going to go ahead.
I'll go first.
My name is Julie Christ, and I live at 312 Oriole Lane in Cambridge. I am married to Bill Christ, who most of you know was a Cambridge Village trustee for almost two years, beginning in 2022. Bill is a retired CFO, Vice President of Finance, and a CPA who started his career as an auditor. He has extensive financial experience and knowledge. When he joined the board, it became evident to him that there were numerous red flags when it came to fiscal responsibility. Being a Village trustee, he offered to help figure out some solutions to the fiscal irresponsibility that had been occurring for years. However, he was ignored, never allowed to meet with the Audit and Finance Committee, which hardly even met, and never given the opportunity to provide some of his expertise and knowledge. We both became very frustrated, and for Bill, to the point of resigning his position as trustee in the last four months of his term. Why is this board so opposed to getting financial advice from a career financial professional who is a community member like Bill that knows what he is talking about? Unfortunately, it seems that you, as a board, feel that all our financial problems will go away if we simply borrow money. Borrowing money is never a solution for fiscal irresponsibility. You cannot borrow your way out of debt. When does it end? Lest you get the idea that the only people of this community that show up to meetings are the ones who care, I beg to differ. You were elected to represent all of the citizens of this community, and we all have a say. Even the single mom who can't come to a board meeting because she can't afford a babysitter to watch her children during the time of a meeting. Even the parents of elementary school kids or high school kids that have school activities on the night of a meeting and the parents need to be there. Even the elderly residents who don't drive at night and therefore can't attend a meeting. Even the residents that have become so frustrated with the way our Village Board functions that they feel, what's the use? There are many more Cambridge residents that are upset with the way our tax dollars are being managed by this board than are here in attendance at this meeting. We all deserve respect and to not be treated as though our voices don't count or matter. Case in point, a rude comment made to my husband, Bill, at a recent Audit and Finance meeting, and a nasty text that you may hear more about later. I urge you to do the hard thing and do your job as trustees of this village and seriously consider making cuts to our spending for 2026. I believe others will be telling you later tonight exactly how much we should borrow and how much the tax levy allows us to borrow. Please don't borrow money simply because we can. How about looking seriously at the budget, line by line, and figuring out which things are wants and which things are needs? When we are in a budget deficit, wants need to be put on the back burner until things get back in order. It might not feel good, and yes, some people will inevitably be unhappy, but let's begin to turn this mess around for the good of everyone in the long run. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, public comment is still open. Any other takers?
Joe Schultz, 341 Waverly Drive. As some of you may recall, I sat in this seat about one year ago, expressing my frustrations with the finances and fire an EMS. During that same meeting, Sharon, you also sat in this seat and expressed your concerns over the income, over the increase in taxes and how it would affect you and many others in the community on fixed incomes. The board's solution? We take out a one-time $200,000 loan throughout to fix the year. Fast forward one year, I'm sitting in the same seat, and we're worse than we were a year ago, as the board has just voted to take out yet another one-time $480,000 loan due to the financial hole the community is with the 2025 budget, and we still have two months to go. Where does it stop? We constituents can sit here and complain all we want, but nothing changes. So my wife, Sarah Schultz, decided to do something about it. To be honest, I didn't want her to be on the board, but she said to me many times, someone needs to step up and do something. I can't sit back and complain and expect things to change, and she was 100% right. However, year-to-date, there's only been one Audit and Finance meeting. When last week's meeting was canceled, Sarah questioned you, Chris, as to why, and you told her you didn't want to burn people out at too many meetings. She expressed that this is exactly why she wanted to be on the board, specifically this committee, and said she wanted to put in the hard work to fix the budget. The response that she received from you, and I quote, "You can be the spokesperson for your frustrated neighbors all you want, but as long as you represent yourself as disagreeable and aggrieved, you will continue to spin your wheels. At the end of the day, attitudes aside, it's all about the votes, and a single no vote is just that." First, this is no way to talk to a fellow trustee. I would expect someone in your position and with your military background to have more character than that, as well as integrity. Second, Sarah's not the voice of a few frustrated neighbors. She's the voice of an entire community that is beyond frustrated with the lack of accountability this board has shown. She's just the only one with enough courage to actually step up and put her frustration into action. Her no vote is saying that what this board has been doing to date isn't working, and the financial disaster we're in is proof of that. Her no vote shows the rest of the community that she's willing to stand up for them when no one else will, and I hope that her no vote will urge others to put their names on the ballot next spring so that her one no vote can turn into two, or three, or four no votes so that we can stop running this village into the ground. Sharon, as I mentioned earlier, you voiced your concerns about the village's financial decisions one year ago, and yet you continue to vote yes every single time money is being spent. What changed? So to those in the community, please come to these meetings, voice your concerns in persons, not just on Facebook rants on the community pages. Actions speak louder than words. We need more voices in this room to hold the board accountable and to tell them what needs to change, and if it doesn't, we, as a community, need to step up and put names on the ballot next spring so we can change the board. Give it the great work, babe. Love you.
All right.
No applause.
All right, we got public comments still open. Who else we got? Come on up.
My name is Bruce Virgin, and I live at 213 Elm Street here in Cambridge, and I just want to reiterate what's already been spoken of. Whether you're an individual, a company, a corporation, or municipality, or a government, you can't borrow yourself out of debt. It just can't be done. You people need to start making hard decisions, figuring out where we can spend less money, what services we can streamline, and I would recommend starting with the big white street sweeper machine that leaves a bigger mess than it's trying to clean up and spends, it's just a money machine, that's all it is. The fuel it takes, the equipment itself, and the manpower, simply not worth it. I've seen it twice in a week's time on the same street, leaving bigger messes than it's trying to pick up. That's someplace to start, that's something to look at, and there's a lot of other things that this village can look at to start spending less money.
All right, thank you.
Bruce.
All right.
Bruce?
Can we hold on the applause, please? I appreciate it.
Bruce, can I get your last name?
Excuse me, there is a decorum out front, and it asks for not having outbursts, so if you're unable to do that, I would ask you to leave now.
Who else do we have for public comment?
Virgin.
Bruce Virgin.
Oh. V-I-R-G-I-N. Thank you, sorry. Sorry to cut them off.
Come on up, Steve.
Steve Struss, 313 South Street in Cambridge. I'm on a slightly different issue here. I'm a member of the Water and Sewer Committee and have been active in Village Government for years, and I know the struggle that you folks face. Expenses go up faster than the levy limit will allow, so I'm going to be sympathetic to you. It's not an easy job. But I understand that there are considerations to move the cost of fire protection from tax roll over to Water and Sewer, and I know that's something that other communities have done. However, I just see it as a shell game. You're just taking, you know, money from one pocket and putting it into another. It's not really accomplishing any savings, and we already have very high water rates, one of the highest in Dane County, and if not the highest. And to shift additional cost, I heard an estimate as much as $250 a year for the typical household on the water bill would make matters even worse. Yeah, that frees up some money you can use for the village, but it's going to hurt people on the other side. So again, you're just moving money, you're not really saving anything. So I want to voice an opinion not to make that move, to leave it on the tax roll. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, any other public comment?
Jeff Jeskey, S05 Woodhaven Court, Cambridge. I was asked to come just voice my opinion about the borrowing, and my opinion is that should be an absolute last resort, that the community's expectation is that you exhaust every other possible avenue before we take out a loan. Obviously, there's going to be cases where there may be loan requirements, but in this case, there's some nice-to-haves that we could have eliminated, and there's possibly even some grants that we could have pursued, and I'd volunteer to help with that mission if we can go after grants. Like, I'd rather bring a solution than a problem. And that's all I really wanted to say, short and sweet, is please consider all alternatives before we just default to taking on new debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Betsy Bush, 566 Cletus Street, Cambridge. I'm a new relative, or relatively new, community member here, and what a shock it's been, guys. From the debt, you can't dig a deeper hole to get out of a hole. None of us, I hope, put our monthly expenses on our credit cards and make partial payments. That's what you're doing. And before we even moved here, we got a letter telling us our water and sewer was going up over 60%. Is that sustainable? I hope not. And what I find really disappointing and shameful, as I've lived here longer, is that our former Village President was a CPA. What is going on? I don't understand it. I'm here tonight because I'm on various Facebook threads. I know there are rumors going around, and I don't want to be part of the problem, I want to be part of the solution, and I expect you guys to be part of the solution. Chris, you don't even look at people when they're speaking to you, and that is not okay. Even if you have nothing on an agenda for a finance committee meeting, have it anyway. We're watching. We want to know that you care and that you're transparent and that you are thinking forward and thinking out of the box and not just looking for low-hanging fruit to cut, that you're making capital plans, that you're looking into the future, that you have hope for your kids and grandkids to want to live here and to be able to afford to live here. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, anything else?
Guys, cut it.
Any other public comment? Bill?
Good evening. Bill Christ, 312 Oriole Lane, Cambridge. Besides everything everyone else has talked about, one of the core problems this board has had and continues, obviously, to have is not tracking current spending against the budget. You've gone all year without a report, all year. You have absolutely no clue how much you're off-budget and how much you've overspent. And your solution to that is to borrow more money. Every board I've been on, I've been on probably 10 to 15 different boards over my professional career, every board down to the smallest organization has a treasury report every month, and everyone knows exactly where they're at financially. You guys have absolutely no clue, none, and you sit here and it's acceptable, unbelievable.
Thank you. All right, what else do we have? Who else do we have for public comment?
So Nick Phillips, 703 Merlot Lane Vineyards, over in the corner there. So everybody's been talking about the budget, and, you know, coming from a background of finance, it's pretty much clear to me, like, there's expenses, there's revenue coming in, and we don't have a clue what this revenue is, but we just think the solution is a loan, and I'm here to tell you that's not the case. Unless you can plan for a surplus down the road and validate that with data and facts, we're going to be paying off this debt and continue to have this debt grow and grow and grow, right? So I think what I really want everybody to hear here that I'm really passionate about is because I see this happen all the time where debt spirals out of control, it's literally my job, and if we don't figure out a different solution or a different way forward, we're just going to be chasing our tail. And the thing that I'm really calling for here that will solve all this, because I've heard people say things about rumors and threads, and I stay off social media, that's by design, but it's happening, and I see it and I hear it, and the way around this as a board is transparency. And the fact that I'm hearing you haven't had a meeting for 11 months on the Finance and Audit Committee, and there's all this big cloud of mystery, you're only asking it to get worse. It's going to expand, and it's going to expand, and then these are going to turn into these sessions every time. That's the reality. So transparency, don't look for the solution in a loan unless you can provide a revenue stream that's going to get rid of that loan ahead of it. I don't see that coming. Thank you.
All right, Nick, thanks.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Phillips.
Is that Nick Phillips?
Yep.
Thank you.
Nick Phillips. All right. Public comments still open. Any other takers? Going once. Going, Betsy. Betsy. I apologize for not looking at you. I write down notes here so I can go back to it and everything, so. Yeah. I write down everybody who's in here in case she doesn't get it, so we can get it recorded appropriately, so. We'll have another public comment towards the latter part of this meeting, so if you can think, if any of your questions resonate or something comes up during this meeting that you want to speak to, we'll have a second one. But with the absence of any other public comment, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to table the consent agenda.
Paula?
Just want to let you know it was updated in the packet. That's online?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, then I need a minute to open it up and take a look at it.
Okay.
Because while she may have updated, I don't know if it's accurate.
Okay.
Okay.
If you want, we can just table it till next, for time's sake.
Can we just table it?
That's fine.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and the reason why?
Because there were a couple of items on the original, in the original packet, that the minutes didn't include a couple of motions that we made and a couple of things we voted on.
Okay.
And so I always like to make sure those are in the packet before we would approve them, just to make sure that they're accurate for the people who are at the meeting to understand that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns about the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will table it.
Yep, we'll include those on November 11 Village Board Meeting, and that way you'll have.
Is tabling the appropriate term? Is tabling the appropriate term?
Postpone.
Postpone. Sorry, postpone it.
All right. All right. I like to go back to table, too. I think that's my comfort zone, but if it's postponed, it's postponed. All right, so, yeah, and just a caveat on that, was it some of those motions that were in the second half of the recording?
No, one was after our closed session, that wasn't included. What we did coming out of closed session wasn't included, and then the other one was the motion that was related to going out for the loan.
Okay.
That was not included in the packet, so I thought that was important to include.
Absolutely.
All right. So moving on to number seven, committee reports. First one, 7 Alpha, which is Fire and EMS Commission. Kristin?
So we met October 15 over at the fire station. Couple of key pieces out of the meeting. We did have a conversation about a fire-only IGA, fire-only budget. The budget, kind of the quick budget that our treasurer was able to put forth, we decided we needed to go back and look at a little bit more because there's some different areas that we could make changes on that budget, so that will be coming back. Chief Evans requested a letter of support for the EMR certification from the commission for the fire department members, so we gave, we did give that letter of support so that they can become EMR certified, which will offer a buffer from the time that the call comes out, that they can initiate patient contact, and then turn care over to the EMS staff when they arrive, so it just gives a little bit quicker care to folks. They do have a limited scope in what they can do, but they'll work with the medical director on that. We are, we have proposed a November 12 four municipality meeting. Finally got the date from everybody on that one, so we're looking at November 12 out at Christiana to talk through further how we want to proceed as far as a commission or that. And then we did have a discussion on the possible amendment to the IGA to allow for change of service. I think that's coming up in a little bit, a little bit further down the road, and we did agree to schedule an interview for our director candidate, so we'll be doing that in the next probably two weeks.
All right. Question for you before I open it up to questions for the other board members is EMR, can you, what's that acronym stand for?
Emergency Medical Responder, so it's like a first responder.
Okay, and they basically can just come out of their firefighter duties and assist?
Yes, yep, they can do, sounds simple, but they can do, they can administer oxygen, they are AED and CPR certified, they already are, but this will give them the license to do so, and then there's multiple other skills that they can perform.
And my second question was, November 12 is the four municipality meeting, once a collective bargaining?
We have not been able to schedule that because we need a second commissioner to join me, so hopefully within November.
Okay.
Because that contract expires at the end of the year.
All right. All right, any questions for Kristin on Fire and EMS Commission? If not, we're going to move on to Public Works Committee. Paula?
I forgot we met for Public Works. Hold on one second, I got to pull the packet up.
Were you at that meeting, Lucy?
I was not.
No?
All right, so at Public Works, we had, we talked about the bricks along Main Street and working on the sidewalk there. That's a kind of a safety concern with the various bricks, and so we looked at that. We did consider, or I did ask the Public Works Committee or people to take a look at what it would cost to replace all those individual bricks with concrete and then stamp it to look like bricks, because, number one, from a safety perspective, then you won't have the underlying wash away, which is what's happened now, which we have had at least one person fall in those areas, which is a liability for the village, and we want to try and avoid that. So we, so I asked the staff to take a look at what the costs would be for something like that, for those. We, DWP priorities, we kind of talked about, you know, what in order of things needing to be done in the village is the priority. We looked at what the training planning is going to be for the two new Public Works employees, well, water and Public Works employees, and I think that's really about it that we talked about, this kind of general overview of things. Anybody have any questions for me?
So I imagine on your priorities, safety was the...
Safety was the number-one priority, is what we've told the staff, yeah. Oh, one thing I did want to make note of is that the park did get installed on LBK Park, the play area, the children's play area got installed out there, so the DWP staff felt pretty good about getting that accomplishment done.
All right.
Just to add, since we're talking about parks, there also was some new or replaced equipment at West Side. Paula, is that, it was a swing and a pad?
Yep.
Like, for underneath the swing?
That's what's in our bill packet today, right?
It is in the bill packet, yes, it is.
Yep.
I have a picture of that, though, I want to do some posts on our Village Facebook page on the progress that our Public Works team has had.
And the sign is up.
Oh, yes, and the Welcome to Cambridge sign out by QuickTrip is up, so the one on the west side of town, coming into town, looks really good.
I can die in peace now.
I missed it when I was coming into town, because, so my husband turned the car around, and we drove back out so he could drive back in so I could see it again.
One down, one to go.
One down, one to go.
All right, well, thank you. Any questions for Paula on Public Works? If not, we're going to move right back to Paula on Water and Sewer.
All right, so Water and Sewer, we talked about the bulk water station, wanting to get one of those installed, and that's something that we'll be looking at moving forward. We need to get the entirety of what the cost of that would be to install, and that would include, like, pouring a concrete pad, there's some electrical that has to go in. Our new Water and Sewer Superintendent, though, made it very clear that he felt a three-season would be much better than a four-season. He said, because no matter what you have when you're in that fourth season, something's going to freeze, whether it's the equipment itself, or the hoses, or the parking lot. He says it's better if you just go with a three-season bulk water station, so that's a shift from what we had been advised previously, so we're going to, we're going to take a look at doing that and look at what those costs are. Let's see, other than that, we just took a look at what kind of projects there are and tried to make a plan for maybe what future capital projects would be that the Water and Sewer would need to engage on, so we had some conversations around that. And I think that's about it. Stephen, am I missing anything?
I think you've hit it.
Not really? Okay, thank you.
We did welcome the new director.
Oh, yeah, we welcomed the new director. So that was the first time we got to meet him.
And he seems really sharp.
Yeah.
You mentioned something about hydrants?
Oh, from a budget perspective, so, in looking at the budget, so, and this will come up, I don't know if you read through the packet, but in the packet, there's the section where it actually goes through Water and Sewer, et cetera, and it talks about the hydrants. So... Not really? Okay, thank you.
We did welcome the new director.
Oh, yeah, we welcomed the new director. So, that was the first time we got to meet him.
And he seems really sharp.
Yeah.
You mentioned something about hydrants and-
Oh, from a budget perspective. So, in, in looking at the budget, so, and this will come up, I don't know if you read through the packet, but in the packet, there's the section where it actually goes through Water and Sewer, et cetera. It talks about the hydrants. So, this, this state of Wisconsin allows you to have the cost of, right now, the Village of Cambridge General Fund pays for the water hydrants, the fire hydrants. And you can, instead of having the, the taxpayers pay for that, you can have the ratepayers with the water utility pay for it. So, there's a way that you can ship that cost. If we shifted that cost, it would be about a $22, just under, a $22 increase, monthly increase for everybody who's paying a water bill. So, the Water and Sewer Board, and Steve expressed this earlier, the Water and Sewer Board is, it feels very strongly that, that that is not something that we should put on the ratepayers. And, you know, part of the argument there is that the hydrants are for everyone, not just the people who use water in town. So, you know, that's, that was our, that was my argument and why I thought it should stay with the, with the rate, with the taxpayers, not the-
Makes sense, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Paula, Water and Sewer? Is there, was there anything brought up in Water and Sewer about the swap out of the meters?
That's going to be one of the items that's in our capital project. But there are some things that are probably, and that's probably, when we swap out those meters, it's probably going to be a three to five-year project because there are, there are just so many. And that's an additional cost. So, we want to take a look at, we're gonna have to spread that cost over a number of years and, and take a look at how we include that in our capital planning for Water and Sewer.
All right. All right. No other questions for Paula? All right, moving on to seven D Administrative Report. Lucy.
Absolutely, so I normally don't do reports, but I had a few things I wanted to share with the community. So, the first thing I wanted to share is that the village is officially live with PSN, which is the Payment Service Network. It is a bill pay system. We have links for utility payments. You can also make other payments for building permits in other areas, but we really want to focus on utilities for now. There is no fees to the user if you use a checking or savings account. If you use a debit or credit card, there is a 3.5% fee. But as long as you use a checking or savings account, there's no fee whatsoever. This is nice because you're able to look up your balance in this service, even if you don't want to pay that way. If you sign up just to be able to see your bills, if one doesn't come in the mail, you can log in and you can actually go back and see, as long as this continues going forward, you can see the past monthly bill amounts, what you've paid, what your normal, you know, usage and charges are. You can also set up automatic payments and pick what day of the month you want them to come out of your account. The information's on our website, and we're happy as staff if anyone wants to come in and wants help having that set up. The reason why this is such a benefit as well to staff is how we've been currently doing, hours and hours are spent putting these payments in one by one. With this PSN process, it comes over as two batches. There's one for checking and savings and one for credit and debit cards. So, it could be 250 payments yesterday, but they'll come in as two batches. And that's going to save staff hours and hours. Plus, there's a lot of beneficial things for the ratepayers as well. So, just wanted to share that. And we'll be doing some more marketing and Facebook posts and things on the website as well to promote that. And then I just wanted to also share that we had a new employee start yesterday with our Public Works team, and his name's Brock Pino, and he is a Public Works laborer. So, if you see a new village employee out working, please say hello to Brock. Welcome to Cambridge side number two. I don't have an update on that, but I'm working with our village attorney to see if we can go back to the golf course and start going back there. LBK Park, Paula already shared, that's been completed, phase one of that. And then the budget, so Public Works Director and myself went through the budget line by line and have that streamlined. Myself and other staff members went through the rest of the general fund budget items for Clerk Administrative. And then I will be meeting with Blake, our utility superintendent, to go over water, sewer, line-by-line items. And so, they'll be ready for the upcoming meetings.
All right. Lucy, I popped out on our website, can you put a link to where people can go sign up for that on the homepage?
Sure.
Because it's not real intuitive on-
Absolutely.
Because it took me a minute to figure out what to click through, so.
Absolutely.
But it looks great.
Oh, absolutely, we can do that. And I did get some feedback from a resident today, just with some of the materials that we have, stating that we need to do a better job communicating about the fees if you're using credit or debit.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then also make sure to also communicate better that there is no fee if using checking or savings account. So, we'll work on that and improving that so that it does a better job getting across that message.
While you're up there, how did your, how did the Halloween?
Oh, it was wonderful. It was wonderful, and Sharon joined us. I do want to thank the donations for candy. I took down a lot of the decorations, but for those community members that came and brought their kids, it was, it was a really good morale booster too for staff. This is not an easy job to do every day. It's, it's pretty high stress and there's more work to do than ours. So, to just have a moment and be able to do a community-engaging fun activity, it was, it was wonderful. Wish we could do that every day. But it was great, and so just thank you for all the support and definitely want to make that a priority. Staff loved it, and the staff all donated their, you know, time and money with decorations and, and treats. And it was, it was just a wonderful time, so.
Pretty large turnout.
I think so. I think we had a couple hundred trick-or-treaters for sure.
All right. Thanks for doing that, appreciate it, and anything else for Lucy? Administrative-wise, okay. If not, we will move on to eight, approval of the bills. Discussion and possible action on approval of the bills. What do we have for this?
Absolutely, so the first check run was in the amount of $32,630.81. Second check run was in the amount of $71,661.25 for a total of $104,292.06.
Okay.
I will make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $104,292.06.
Do we have a second?
Trustee Hollenbeck seconds.
All right. Discussion, high points over 35K?
Yes, so we have over 5,000, we have our Dean Health Plan Bill, GFL. The Associated Bank payment, oh, I'm sorry, Dean was $6,279.52, that's health insurance. GFL, which is our garbage and recycle, $9,769.94. Associated Bank, that is actually a water loan payment. And the reason it got added to the village check run was due to timing. So, that was $19,572.50 payment. We had invoices from Ellers for $6,350. Those included the Board of Review and all the TID reports that they did. Huntington Bank, that is another water, water bill. That payment's $22,411.98. And then the Village of Deerfield, $21,774.85. And that is for our Dane County Sheriff's contract.
All right, Lucy, thank you for that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills in the amount of $104,292.06. Roll call, please.
Bernie.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trendle.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
All right, bills are paid. With that being said, we're going to move on to nine, unfinished business, action required. Discussion and possible action on the 2025 Financial Management Plan. This is workshop number three, presented by Mr. Casey Grippits.
Yes.
And Casey, what page do we?
Uh, we are going to start on page 18, I believe.
I think you are correct.
Does everybody have a copy of the presentation? I do have extras if anybody needs.
I do too, please.
If you've got extras, it'd be good.
Thank you.
Are we working off of packet number two?
Uh-
Yes, yes.
That is packet number two.
Sorry.
Okay, beautiful. Yep, we're just starting on page.
That's okay, I just wanted to confirm.
Eighteen, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Uh, no, I just only have it for the board, I'm sorry. I'm sure if you ask-
You can have mine, I can look at it with Kristin, whoever wants one.
So, good evening, thank you for having me. I understand that you had gone through the first portion of your financial management plan with my associate, Brian Raymer. So, I'm here to go through the second half of this, which will go through your financial management plan, examining your tax increment financing districts, and then your three utilities, your water utility, sewer utility, and stormwater utility. So, starting on page 18 of the, of the presentation. So, if we go to the next page, which is, it's titled TID Updates. I guess first thing to start off with, is everybody familiar with tax increment financing before I start? Because I know that that's kind of a, just so we understand where a baseline is of what tax increment financing is. So, basically what tax increment financing is, is it's an economic development tool that municipalities use in the state of Wisconsin. When you create a district, a tax increment district, it sets the value at a baseline of a district as a time of creation. As development occurs within that district, the increment, so the additional value that's generated from the development and the additional taxes that are generated from that development is called the increment, as in used to pay back the expenditures of the district. So, what we have here in this report is a status update of your three tax increment districts, four, five, and six. This was in appendix, the appendices at the end of the, at the end of the presentation. This was presented to the Annual Joint Review Board. So, Joint Review Board is the, the oversight body of your districts. It's made up of a representative from the village, it's made up of a representative from the technical college, the county, and the, and the school district. So, actually, if you want to turn, because I just want to explain the reports, I'm not going to go through the appendices, but I did want to explain kind of what those, these charts mean. So, if you wanted to flip to the very end of the report, so pass that Q and A slide and go to, it'll be Appendix A, page four of 28, it's at the top. It'll say Village of Cambridge Tax Increment District Number Four Development Assumptions. So, these are the reports that we put together annually on behalf of the village to present to the Joint Review Board. So, the first slide here, this is your development assumptions. So, these are, let's say the development assumption, these are actually actual valuations that have been reported to the Department of Revenue, is what your, what your, what construction that has seen or redevelopment or increased valuation or decrease in valuation of that tax increment district. So, that's basically, we input the valuation here, the information from the Department of Revenue. If you go to the next slide, this is the tax increment projection worksheet. So, this takes that information in your value that's added, puts that into this sheet, and then this will get you to what your tax rate and tax increments are. So, your tax rate is based on, your TID tax rate is actually based on a determination from the Department of Revenue. It's the PC 202 form, also known as the TID worksheet. This is a calculation that's done based on your TID out equalized value and the appropriated levy from each of the taxing jurisdictions. That's how you rev it your tax rate for your tax increment districts, which then arrives at your tax increment. So, the actual dollar amount that is generated of the tax dollars within that district. That's shown in the orange column on the very, very right side. In this report, you'll see some dotted lines. Those dotted lines are actual numbers. Anything below those lines is projections that we project out for the district. So, in the case here of District Four, we know that into the 2025 revenue year, so next year's revenue year, we know that the TID tax rate is 1788. The tax increment is going to be $127,990. And then we know, moving forward for the next year, valuation year and revenue year of 2026, we know what those values are. So, we know what the value is right now of that district, that's $8,128,200. The reason for the lag is that the, the generated income or the generated increment is on a two-year lag between when value is recognized, when value is then, is attributed to the district, and when cash is, cash happens. So, everything, you're like your tax bill at your house, that is, your tax bill for this year will be based on your value of your home as of January 20, January 1st of 2025. So, even though you pay it, or you may pay it in 2026, it's actually a valuation based on 2025. Same thing works for tax increment districts. So, that's why you see a little bit of a lag there. So, that's why we know what the increment will be in 2025, because we have projections that we know what the value was, we know what the, the tax rate will be. However, we don't necessarily know what 2026 will be, because we don't necessarily have the tax rate yet for that. Then following the next page, and these follow the same, so these, these follow, each of the reports are the same for District Four, Five, and Six. But this is a cash flow projection. So, we project out what the district is going to be cash flowing in terms of its revenues and its expenditures over the lifetime of the district. So, in this case, for four, the year that it's supposed to close, the statutory year that's supposed to close is 2034, we've projected out increments based on, based on what we foresee in the future. And then we know what the expenditures are that have been incurred. There may be some additional expenditures that the village would want to undertake in this district if it warrant, if it's warranted or if it's needed. But then that spits out at the very, very right-hand side, their balances. What that is showing is, is that showing your total expenditure, your total revenues and expenditures, what the annual, annual amounts are, and your accumulated fund balance, so how the, how much, how much funds are in the district overall. In this case here, your statutory, your statutory termination is 2034. However, we're showing this could project, this could, this district could close earlier if the village were so, so decided to do so. The reason we project that is, is basically what that just means is that the district has sufficient of revenue at that point to basically cover any, any outstanding liabilities, in this case, principal outstanding liabilities in that district. So, just wanted to give a little bit of context to that because of the, the sheet here on 18 didn't really, didn't really include a lot of that information, so.
Question, is there a benefit if we're able to close a TID district early?
There can be, yeah, and I would say you want to look at, you'd want to look at that at the time, the timeframe of when you'd want to close it, or when it would be eligible to, to close. Obviously, if it's closed early, that means the, the valuation, that increment valuation is now fully on the tax rolls. It's fully on the, it's fully on the, on the assessment roll as taxable, that's one, that's one thing. One reason you may not want to close it early is if you know you're going to have expenditures for development purposes, meaning the but-for test, meaning that, that development wouldn't happen but for the assistance of the district.
Gotcha.
So, what goes into that projected closure?
The, so the projected, the projected closure, that goes into basically your projected revenues over time, your cumulative projected revenues and expenditures over time, and what that fund balance, what that ultimate fund balance would be. And less any, any liabilities. In this case here, you have liabilities because you have state trust fund loans that were taken out for development incentives, or for, for projects. So, what this is telling- Um, so what this is telling us here is, is that your cumulative fund balance in twenty twenty-nine is projected to be three hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's, uh, greater than the liabilities, that, that debt that's still outstanding of a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. So you have to pay off those liabilities, but you have enough potentially to close the district if you want to do so.
So is this, so is this something that would be reviewed at that joint review?
This is reviewed at the joint review board, yes.
And then at that point, I think we would look to Elers to sort of say, hey, what are your recommendations based on?
What are the advantages?
Right.
Yeah.
So we'd, we'd look to Elers to help us with that decision when that came.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, super, thank you.
Yep. So if we go back then to, uh, page eighteen, sorry, I got all a little bit of, uh, whack here. Page eighteen, so this just shows, again, a synopsis of what your districts are, um, you know, where your districts are at, um, for the current year. So, uh, in twenty twenty-four, uh, the dis, TID Four's, uh, end of year fund balance was nine thousand eight thirty-three. Um, again, as I said, it has an expected closure of twenty twenty-nine. Um, the original expected closure was twenty twenty-nine as well, too. So, that's one thing, when we create and we assist communities with creating districts, there's obviously the standard, you know, when at, when it's required to close, and then there's also what we project out in our modeling, based upon known expenditures and known revenues, or projected revenues. Um, TID Five, uh, that was created in twenty twenty, uh, has a year-end fund balance of six hundred forty-nine thousand two oh five, uh, and it's expected, uh, to close in twenty thirty, which is ten years earlier than what we had originally projected out to be, which is twenty forty. And then TID Six, um, that was created in twenty twenty-two, has a year-end fund balance, uh, this is in the negative, uh, negative hundred ten thousand nine eighty-three. Um, it's, uh, expected closure date is twenty thirty-six. That's not a normal to have a negative fund balance in particularly early years of a TID, this is only a two-year-old TID at this, at this point. So, um, it's, takes time, as I said, remember, it does take, as development occurs, um, as, as new projects come online, as value is added and increased, uh, it will eventually positively cash flow, or the, the, the hope is that it'll eventually positively cash flow. Any questions? Okay. So moving on, uh, going to, uh, page twenty-one, uh, so we're going to, uh, focus now on the three utilities. So, we'll start with the water utility, but, um, just kind of to go through what our process is, um, in our review of the utilities, and actually with regard to kind of your financial management plan in its entirety. So, um, the goal is to minimize one-time rate changes while maintaining annual debt coverage and healthy reserves. So what we want to do is we want to try to kind of space everything out, or show a projection to space everything out to potentially, you know, increase rates at a certain level, uh, a level period or over a certain level period of time. So how we do that, what we look at is we look at your historical rate performance, um, how has the, have the utilities been in a five-year look back period? We look at future projections, including your operation and maintenance budgets and audits, your depreciation over time of your capital assets, and any, um, uh, payment in lieu of tax payment, or ta, payment in lieu of taxes, uh, or pilot payments that are being made. And then we also look at funding projects or potential projects in the future, and does it make sense to finance that debt or with cash? Um, and then ultimately, to come up with a rate impact. So what does the rate impact be, trying to be, uh, an understanding of how users and how ratepayers are, would be affected by that. If you go to page twenty-two, this is just, um, kind of a synopsis of two different metrics that we utilize when we look at, uh, utilities. So there's two different types of, um, uh, two different types of, uh, revenue requirements. So, um, there's either the cash basis and the utility basis, and we modeled both of these out in your financial management plan. Um, this is just basically to, to determine how much revenue should we generate from user rates. So under the cash basis, um, what it looks at is it takes your operating and maintenance expenses, it takes the taxes and transfers, transfer payments, it takes your debt service, so your principal and interest on debt service, it takes your capital funded from rates, and then it less, less non-rate revenue to get a total revenue requirement. Under the utility basis, which is also known as the Public Service Commission method, uh, it's a little bit different, um, very similar, but, but somewhat different. That includes operation and maintenance expenses, taxes and transfer payments, that includes depreciation, so asset life as it depreciates, what that depreciation amount is, the rate of return on a rate base, and then less non-rate revenue, that gets your total rate requirements. And this will become apparent when we look at the next, next couple of slides, to kind of show different, where the, how the utilities have performed based on these different types of, uh, different types of, uh, metrics. Uh, if you go to page twenty-three, uh, this is, uh, your historical implementation of water rates. So the village completed a conventional rate case, um, and it was completed on May fourth, first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, this was a sixty-six percent increase overall, and that helped to fund, uh, a well project, uh, for, for the village. Um, you also had simplified rating ca, rate cases that were approved in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-four. A simplified rate case is a little different than a conventional rate case, the simplified rate case is an easier, uh, method, it's, we sometimes call it the inflationary rate increase. Um, you're not always eligible for one, um, but when you do, we some, we definitely try and recommend communities do that if it makes sense, um, for them to do financially, uh, because it does help with the shocks of, you know, rate incre, you know, significant rate increases like we saw with the, uh, conventional rate case here in twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, prior to twenty twenty-four, your, uh, conventional rate case was completed, uh, the last one was, uh, January, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, uh, July of twenty fifteen. So if you want to go to page, uh, twenty-five, this is, uh, going into your water fund, uh, your per, rate performance, um, for the water, uh, water fund. Um, the first page here is, this is just your rate performance over, um, which, this is shown as no increase. Um, so as you can see, under the cash basis and utility basis, the utility basis rates relatively adequate. I want to point to kind of the red numbers that are in there. Under the cash basis, rates were not, were, were, were not meeting, uh, the rate adequacy. So you saw, you see in here these red numbers, that's obviously not, uh, what we'd like to see in terms of a positive cash flow. Um, basically what this does is this takes your, um, your, uh, both of these models, take your, um, your operating and maintenance and pilot payments, your debt, your cash funded capital, so all your expenditures, less all ru, all our revenue to get to the revenue requirement. So, um, and then the user revenue that is actually generated. So, for instance, in twenty twenty-one, showing here under the cash basis, you had a revenue requirement of seven hundred eighty thousand six hundred seventy-seven, the user rate, reuse rate revenue was five hundred sixty-six thousand six ninety-six, so that shows a deficiency that's there. Um, under the, uh, utility basis, uh, this is a little bit, in a little bit better of a, of a situation in those years, um, but, um, still showing some rate adjustments that were needed. Overall, though, what we see here is, is that in, in, in kind of both situations, there is some, some rate increases that were needed, um, for the, for the, for the, in twenty twenty-four for that, um, as you can see, that large number there, that seven million, seven-point-four million dollar adequacy, uh, deficiency in twenty twenty-four, that was largely attributed to the well project. If you go to the next page, uh, which is, uh, what says water future projection, um, so this is, uh, what we're projecting out and needs for the future. Uh, would not need any rate increases, uh, really until twenty twenty-nine, um, and in that case, we would look to say you'd want to do a simplified rate increase at that point. So, what we're showing is, is there is a bit of a annual net cash flow, uh, that's sort of at the bottom of this, of this, uh, slide here, showing an eighty-two thousand dollar, uh, 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 decrease or an eighty-two thousand deficiency. Um, however, the, the, the utility does positively cash flow past that. So, um, ultimately, what we kind of wanted to show here is, is that really to keep an adequate, uh, all-in-debt coverage, the amount of cash that's needed on hand for the PSC, and to ke, to keep a positive cash flow for the district, you really, um, really don't need to do anything until twenty twenty-nine, which would be a simplified rate increase. And at that point, we'd recommend a simplified rate increase, if warranted, in twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty-one, and twenty thirty-three, and twenty thirty-five. Again, those are the inflationary adjustments. So the inflationary adjustments that the PSC allows, um, the utility to, the utility to do. And we would work with the village, uh, to make that determination, if it would make sense to do, um, a simplified rate increase at that point. Uh, if you then, uh, go to page twenty-seven, um, so, and this was brought up, uh, I think in public comments, but, um, this is show, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, just to simplify, um, on page, uh, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Um, so, if I'm understanding this correctly, is this saying since twenty twenty-one, the water has been in the red ever since twenty twenty-one?
No, not necessarily.
I'm not understanding.
It was, it was, it was more of, it wa, were the rates adequate long-term, or would the rates be adequate for it to be long-term? So, this is basically showing that your, um, your revenue requirement wasn't really, your, your costless other income wasn't meeting, meeting the, the rate requirements that are needed to keep the, to keep financial sustainability for the district, or for the, for the utility.
And the top, just the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
Are there two different ways you can do the accounting that, from that first slide you had, where you could either do cash basis or do utility basis?
Mm-hmm.
Through PSC.
Okay.
And, and.
It's just, it's hard to follow all of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, so then go, if you just go to, uh, page twenty-seven, so the increase, um, does, it, the increase that would, that occurred, um, did, uh, boost the, the utility into the, you do have the highest rates in, in Dane County. So, um, as you can see here, you're list, you're at the very top, um, you know, with your minimum quarterly, uh, for a five-eighth centimeter, for this is a typical residential, uh, residential meter, um, sixty-six dollars, a thousand gallons of usage is a hundred forty-eight fifty. Uh, so, you know, you, you see in any of those two different, uh, or three different, um, consumption rates, uh, you do have the highest, the highest rates in the, in Dane County. Moving to page, uh, twenty-eight, and I know that this was brought up, so this is a good, uh, good chance to, um, kind of clarify here. Uh, this is, uh, rate structure changes that we.
Steve, you had a question? Can we take comments from the audience? Well, public. We have the second.
Yeah, so the public fire protection fee, um, so, uh, this is something we always look at, uh, in terms of where we're, when we do a financial management plan, as to whether or not, um, it would make sense, or whether or not that the community has, uh, done this rate structure change. So, the, uh, PFP, Public Fire Protection, sometimes called the hydrant rental fee, um, is one of the, uh, it's a covered service, but it's an allowable adjustment that communities can make to their water bill, um, or to, and to their, to their levy amount, um, in order to move that amount from the tax bill, or from the tax levy onto the, um, onto the, um, under the water bill. Um, does it cause any need to decrease, uh, the tax levy? Um, it is an allowable shift and adjustment, uh, the state does allow it under levy limit law to make that adjustment. So, uh, you currently charge, uh, two hundred sixty-four thousand nine thirty-three to your tax bill, um, or to the tax levy, that's covering the fire protection fee. So essentially, your taxes are going to the utility to pay for that, for that amount.
Casey, is that a pilot?
No, that is not.
That's not?
No, that is not a pilot, no. No, this is something that you're required under your tariff, and under the PSC requires every utility to have.
Done.
Um, or should, not, not that amount, but the public fire protection fee. Um, so what we always do is, is this is obviously a solution to, um, help with, uh, your general fund revenues. Um, obviously, it is, um, you know, it is, it is not necessarily a decrease in taxes, nor is it decreasing your water, in your utility bill. Um, it is essentially putting additional charge on that utility bill. Um, it does eliminate that as a, a general fund expenditure line, so that two hundred sixty-five thousand is able to be utilized for other things that are in your, in your general fund. Um, so the, um, the decision is wholly up to the, up to the, up to the board, um, this is something that can be done, um, uh, within five years of an approved conventional rate case. So you did your conventional rate case in twenty twenty-four, there's no, just, no decision that has to be made on it today or anything like that, but, um, you know, you do have some time to consider it if that was something you wanted to, wanted to move forward with.
Casey, I have a quick question on, on that.
Sure.
Um, based on, I know Elers works with over two hundred municipalities in the state of Wisconsin, um, do you, is, do a large amount of those, do you, you know, put it on the utility? I, where I live, I just, out of curiosity.
Yeah, sure, sure. Um, I mean, so I've been in, so prior to my coming to Elers, um, I was a city administrator, um, for, uh, in municipal government for about fifteen years. Um, and when I started my career, this was a topic of conversation then. I would say, um, this is probably, we've seen many more communities move in this direction. Um, I don't know the exact numbers, I would say it's probably a little bit over fifty percent of the communities in the state have, have made that transition, possibly maybe more. Um, we have seen it increasing frequency, um, you know, is, I think everybody knows, is levy limits, uh, are restrictive, you know, with communities. Um, there are, have been, um, strategies that have been implemented by communities to deal with levy limits, um, but I think sometimes there's, it's, it's becoming a much narrower gap to, uh, to, to, to fix, and oftentimes, this is a very, very, I don't want to say, it's not easy, but it is something that's, it's available to communities, and so people have, people have certainly looked at that. We have had that conversation with a number of, number of communities.
You got to take that statistical data and also couple it with the fact that we're the highest in Dane County.
That's correct, no, and that, that's true, yeah, that, that's correct, yeah.
I mean, if, if, if our board had chosen to do this in twenty fifteen, you know, that would be a different conversation.
Right.
But I think with the large increase that we just had, the Water and Sewer Board just doesn't see how this is at all doable.
Yeah. Yep. Uh, so just, uh, could, to kind of continue on this, I just wanted to, uh, just throw what we did and then our analysis, this is on page twenty-nine, of what that estimated impact would be. Um, so, uh, this just takes all of your meters, um, with the, um, average customer, average number of customers, totals, total numbers, um, and basically puts out what the monthly rate would be, based upon what the total PFP costs are. So that roughly, for a residential user, it's about twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents per, uh, a month. Um, so the, the, that is, um, roughly, uh, two hundred sixty dollars annually, uh, on a residential water bill. Um, if you extrapolate that out a little bit in the notes there, what the current charge on the tax bill is, um, so what we've determined is the mill rate for the, the PFP is a dollar eighteen, uh, per one thousand. So, if you take an average assessment of three hundred thousand dollars, it costs about three hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty cents annually of taxes, so of, of, of individuals, uh, individual property owners' taxes, um, onto, on, that is accounted for the, in the PFP. Um, part of the reason for that is, um, the public fire protection fee, uh, accounts for your utility users, not necessarily your taxpayers. So utility, obviously, it does count, it does hit your taxpayers, um, because your taxpayers and utility ratepayers are often one of the same. However, you do have a number of tax-exempt properties that probably use water, um, schools being one of them.
Somebody else is making up.
Correct, so there are, there are, um, and the public authority, let's list it here, is likely most of those, those, um, those users that aren't currently, that are, are tax exempt. So, it's essentially your, you are, um, you are charging those tax-exempt entities now for, for the service. That is an argument, I will say, uh, for moving it towards, again, I'm not advocating one way or another, but as an argument is that, uh, your, your ratepayers are essentially, uh, you're not necessarily your taxpayers, but your ratepayers are paying for the charge that's essentially a utility charge. Any questions?
If you look at that table, um, and take a look at the, uh, you know, the cu, the customers we have in each one of those different areas, and you see we have six customers that have a three-inch coming in, and the additional monthly rate to them would be three hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, in addition to what they're already paying for water.
But you're also spreading that across all users, not, you, you, I mean, we are looking at some individuals who are paying for others who aren't paying right now.
And it would be, it would be, i- if we change it, if we change it to the ratepayers, then all the landlords whose houses are protected by those fire hydrants aren't paying anything, and their tenants are.
Sure.
I mean, so either way, you've got somebody who's not paying.
Yeah.
For a service that they're getting. And, and, um, a, a, as, as Casey pointed out, this isn't a decision we have to make.
Right.
We could, i- if this year it doesn't make sense to us, maybe next year it will, or the year after. So basically, we've got four more years.
Correct.
That we could do this, if we decided that we, this was what, the right thing for the Village of Cambridge to us.
Right.
It's nice to have options.
Okay, um, moving on to the sewer fund, um, I'm not going to spend a ton of time I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this because we are actually still in the process of, of doing a full rate case and that basically is related to your, the Rockdale Intercept sewer addition. So what we show here is, is the historical rate performance down here. Again, not showing rates being adequate enough, both under the cash basis and the utility basis. Really looking at that 2024, 2025, and 2026 numbers here. So again, you know, rate adjustments determined, determined to be needed in both of, in those instances. So if you go to the next page, which is the future projections, and this is going to probably change a little bit, kind of based on what, Brian will be back here in November to give that final report on your sewer analysis. But what we're projecting out here at the very, very top is the percent increase to user rates that we're looking at. So in 2027, that would be eleven point seven six percent, and then three percent in 28, and then 2030 through 2034. That's to basically get the, the utility back into a positive net annual cash flow. And also to have your debt coverage, which is something that you want to ensure that you have enough coverage, adequate coverage ratios in order to make sure that you can pay whatever debt that you have related, relative to your revenues that you're generating, generating here. So that's basically, you know, just kind of a, a primer for Brian's next, next discussion, which will, which will happen in, with a full sewer rate case discussion in, in November. And then stormwater, so this is actually one of your utilities, utilities is actually performing very well. Rate adequacy is, is adequate. So under the historical rate performance, you have adequate rates. Future projection, we're not really anticipating any need for a rate increase until 2033. Relatively typical stormwater utilities tend to be, you know, a little bit less cash heavy than sewer and water utilities. But this is showing overall a good, a good projection with this year's budget as well as going into 2027. Again, not necessarily needing, which would be an inflationary increase in 2033, 2034. Moving on to page 37, this is just showing a rate impact for average residential user. So this goes and shows your water, sewer and stormwater, average monthly bills. What we just kind of pointed out is the total change over the planning period for water. So if the village were to take those sort of inflationary increases for water in 29, 31, and 33, that would show about a, a eight dollar eighty cents per, you know, change over the planning period over the prior year, prior year amount. So this does not include public fire protection fee, it would calculate it in there. So this is basically just if you were to keep everything the same and only do these inflationary adjustments in 29, 31, and 33. For sewer, it's a little bit different because we would be recommending, and again, this is going to probably morph and change just a little bit and go into next month. But we are, would anticipate a larger total change over that planning period of about thirty dollars in total for, of a monthly bill. And then stormwater is a very, very minimal increase, roughly about fourteen cents per. So a total of a change over the prior year from an annual bill perspective, if you were to implement all of these changes. Again, stress, this is your financial management plan, this is, you know, this is, these are just recommendations we're making. Ultimately, the decision is up to the, up to the board. But the change over the prior years in total over this prime period would be about, in all utility bills, about four hundred fifty dollars and fifty five cents in total over that, over basically a ten year period. And then that, on the very right hand side there is the percentage of median household income. That's basically what the increases are. So we're seeing about a, about a two and a half, two to two and a half increase over median household income, percentage of median household income over those years.
Over how many years?
Over ten years, so from 2025 to 2035.
And you said that this does not include the.
This would not include the fire protection, correct. And it also assumes just kind of general status quo in terms of, yeah. Obviously, you know, rates or, or additional users, that sort of thing, you know, additional development could potentially affect the overall revenue that's generated by the utility.
So, so do you take into consideration when you're looking at these, the expenditures we're doing as well? Okay, because, because there's a sewer loan right now that we're paying for at COWC that will be paid off in a few years.
Next year.
Next year, oh, in next year. And so there are conversations about, that's going to be taking place at COWC, about whether they just keep rates the way they are and then hold that money for when, basically in a slush fund, which of course, my Water and Sewer Board doesn't agree with, or they'd be able to bring it back and lower some of the sewer rates. So, or there's a third option, which would be beneficial as well, is maybe hold on to some of those dollars and do a dollar match with the Village of Cambridge to line our sewer systems. Because right now, we're probably paying higher sewer rates than, as a village than we should be because of infiltration into the sewer lines. And so if we got them lined, that would be a way that we could help to reduce those costs as well. So long term, that would be a, that, that would be a good decision for village people. So that's something I think we, as a village and any rate payers, need to pay attention to if COWC is looking at doing and what they're planning to do once that loan is paid off, so that we can get some kind of benefit. If they're not going to lower the rates, I think we should get a benefit for it by lining those, by doing a cost share.
They also need to upgrade. There, there was talks about upgrading the facilities because.
But not next year.
No, but soon, sooner than later, it's twenty plus years old, right?
But, but again, you're not, you're not, you're not gonna, I would argue, I, I don't want them having a slush fund because then, like.
No, I'm not saying.
Like Brian had said at our last meeting, his, his grandparents who paid in for a road that they never drove on. You know, we'd have people paying for an upgrade to the sewer system that they would never be able to use because it was too far in the future.
But I can also understand where COWC is coming from when it comes to the fluctuation, right? So, okay, well, your water bills are going to go down for a year, but then they're going to skyrocket up again because we have to upgrade our, our sewer facilities because of developments and whatever the case, right? So there, there has to be some kind of middle ground of what, what can do, could they put it in a bond? Or could they put it in something to facilitate that, that upgrade? Because it's, it's going to become a necessity here fairly soon. And what you're going to see is you're going to probably see that little dip in your bill, and then all of a sudden, you're gonna, it's probably going to be, you know, a huge one. But I don't like the word slush fund, I don't, you know, I don't think that that should, we should facilitate that. But there should be something within our, you know, governmental finance that allows us to set some money aside for that upgrade purpose only, you know?
But again, then I'm paying for something that ten years from now, if I don't live in Cambridge, I'll never take advantage of.
Right. Well, you do that every year when you pay your taxes. I mean, you could, you can move out, you know, you can move away from Cambridge next year, but you paid for it, you know? So if that's the logic.
That's, that's, that it's, I think, I don't, I don't see that as the same logic, Chris.
I'm just looking at the inevitability of that upgrade needing to happen. So it's kind of like the, the school district, right? So we used to have a superintendent that was, that was brilliant with this because it was soon as, soon as one, soon as one referendum was paid off, he'd have one in the queue, right? He'd have one already, so that, that payment would never change, would never fluctuate. He'd have another one right in the queue. So I thought that was, at the time, I thought that was a pretty brilliant thing because, you know, it's, the taxpayer were none, none the wiser, I guess, you know, because. But when it comes to our water and, and us being the, the number one rate payer in Dane County and whatever, but that's water.
That's water, we're talking sewer.
But, you know, if you look at your water bill, the, the, the highest part of your water bill is the sewer, right? So don't lump that into just, hey, my water bill is expensive in Cambridge. Well, yeah, it is, but, but the, what you're paying the most for is that sewer. And I just don't want to see the, the shock value of somebody opening up their water and sewer bill when that upgrade needs to happen. Because I don't know, Steve, maybe you can answer this, but are we going to be in a situation where it's mandated that we upgrade that?
It's coming in, I'd say, five to 10 years, it's not.
Like the, like well number three, that was a mandate from the DNR. We had to do that. That's why I, I opposed the referendum for fire and EMS. That's why I opposed, because you don't want dual referendums. You don't want both referendums coming out of your pocketbooks at the same time. So we knew that that was a mandate from the DNR, we had to do that well. So of course, we're not going to, I'm not going to, me personally, I'm not going to be supportive of a new firehouse because we can't afford it, right? You gotta have one or the other.
What Paula points out, the, a clean water fund loan would be available from the DNR in the future. And that's like a two percent, so it's actually below the inflationary rate. So yeah, you're borrowing money, but you're borrowing it at such a low rate that it's really, you're staying even with inflation. So, so yeah, there, there'll be a future impact, but it shouldn't be as significant as, say, the well for any means.
Right. All right, sorry, am I tangent there?
And, and again, I think part of the reason the water increase was so high is because there was a long period of time where the Water and Sewer Board chose not to do those incremental increases.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's why, that's part of what contributed that, to that really large jump.
Well, we know Ellers did the, the, they got in the, in the field and did the fighting for us for, with the PSC to try to get our rates to somewhat, you know.
Well, it was lower than what they originally wanted, so, yeah, yeah.
But still.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, I just, just kind of in closing, just looking ahead, and as I said, Brian will be back in November to kind of give that full sewer rate analysis. But just kind of some next steps. So we do still need some updates to your operating capital as you finalize your budget and your capital improvement plan. That will obviously be incorporated into this, into this, into this FMP model. And then early 2026, what we recommend is, is based on your capital improvement plan, taking a look at a preliminary financing plan of how to pay for that and how to, how to, how to structure, you know, what you need to do from that, from your capital and what you need to potentially borrow for, or what you can use potentially for cash. But looking at, looking at your financing plan for the future.
I would like to ask the board if we allow Steve Stross to ask his question. Do you mind? Steve is on our Water and Sewer Board, so I would imagine it has something to do with the topic here at hand.
I have no problem.
Yeah, that's fine.
Steve, go ahead.
If I could, thank you. Real quickly, I just want to address a couple of things. Again, Steve Stross, 313 South Street. The, the reason our water is so expensive is because the village treats the water, it softens all the water. There's a huge facility, large tanks, pumps, salt has to be purchased. It's, it's an ion exchange, just like you'd have in your house. The fact that the village does that, then no one has to have a softener in their house. I know a lot of people still do, but it's really not necessary. Our water here is very hard. We have, you know, eight hundred grains, we have iron, magnesium, there's even a little bit of radon. And if we didn't soften, we'd then have to treat for radon. So it, it's just a fact that we have the water, we, if, if you live in, around the lake and you have your own well, and you know, I lived there and we had to have a softener and an iron filter. And it, it just, there's only three communities in the whole state that soften their water, and we just happen to be lucky enough that we're one of them.
And, and in addition to the radon we'd have to treat, it, it would also make our equipment break down much more quickly. So we'd have to be spending a whole lot more on repairs or do upgrades more often than what we do in paying for softening.
This is true, pumps, valves, pipes would, would line with magnesium, yeah, Kelsifi. So yes, it does make our system last longer, but there is a huge expense. That seven million dollars for well number three upgrade was, most of that was for the softening system. I don't have a number, but without that, it probably would have been two and a half to three million. So that's, you know, that's just what we're up against, unfortunately. And that's why you see us at the very top. No other community in Dane County softens their water. So we did consider not putting in a softener with well number three, but then everybody in the community would have to have a softener. So we felt like it was kind of a public service. And like Paula points out, it does benefit our system, so.
It would be, it would be different from well number two, right? Because well number two.
Well, well, number two has softening too, yeah. But we built that when things were quite a bit less expensive.
Right.
Yeah, so, but yeah, just pointing out when the reality is the life here. As far as the, the sewer goes, the, yeah, the lion's share of that is paying for the treatment. Cambridge Oakland Wastewater Treatment Commission, which I'm also on. And yeah, we'll, we'll pay off that loan, the clean water fund loan in June of this coming year. So that's really good news, that's thirty eight thousand dollars a month that we'll be paying less. However, we, I know, I'm a voice in the wilderness there, I want to cut back on our rates. All the other commission members want to hold them steady. So that's something, if the public has an opinion, they can come out to the public meetings, they're posted, and, and voice what they think is the best thing to do. I think there's a middle ground where, you know, we'll have seven hundred thousand dollars in balance that, not necessarily slush fund, but money we'll be sitting on, we'll be gaining some interest. But it's not really benefiting anybody until we do an expansion. And that, like I said, we're just going to start a facilities plan in, in 26. That takes two or three years, and then you have to, you know, design, bid.
But the expansion is inevitable, right?
There, there is an expand, we're at about eighty percent capacity now.
Okay.
If we tighten up the system though, like Paula mentions, as far as inflow and infiltration, we could be back to about sixty percent.
Yep.
And that could, that could extend the life of the plant. But things wear out, you know, pumps, valves, whatever. So if you want to come see the treatment plant, you'll see there's a lot of equipment out there and chemicals and things, yes.
So Steve, kind of perfect, Casey, you were on that meeting this morning? Okay, one of the questions, and I was going to do this elsewhere, but I, I need to know if the rates are going to change at all for 2026 for budget purposes and that rate case study? That's something I need to get back to Ellers. And then we did see a very big discrepancy on the INI as well that we are going over.
Yeah, yeah, we just noted, you know, that as part of the report that we look at, that there was a kind of difference.
Yes.
You know, in what was, sort of what was treated versus what was actually, which, which, and I, and I have, as again, as I said, being a former city administrator, I was part of MMSD, Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewers District's INI Infiltration Program for a number of years. So if you can reduce that, it obviously improves your system. I don't know if you have problems with overcharges here or not, that was MMSD's problem primarily. But yeah, it can help, it certainly can help to essentially, does everybody, I guess, does everybody know what INI is before? I'm getting out of my field here a little bit on the finance, but, but yeah.
Groundwater leaking into the system.
Yes.
Pipes, manholes, whatnot.
Yep.
And we'll, when there's a two inch rain or, or more in this area, we'll see a big inflow out at the treatment plant.
Yep.
Which is just clear water that you still have to.
Still have to treat it.
Yeah, it still has to go through the system.
And, and I think Casey and, and the team had said like thirty percent's normal, but we're showing like more, closer to fifty percent.
Yeah, now again, that's just from, that was just from a, a report, if it was entered, you know, maybe.
Yeah.
But yeah, we did, it was just kind of something that we noted, that Brian noted in, in looking at the report, so.
I was going to be reaching out to Brian from the COWC to, to talk further.
And that's where, when they've, when we spent all that time televising the sewer lines, that's why.
Oh, you think that's why?
Because we see where we've got issues, and then we see where there are cracks in the line, where flow can, can inflow during heavy rains, and that's why getting those lined is going to be important.
That'll help that, okay.
If we could do a cost share and COWC would help us pay for some of that, that'd be really great. If they don't, that is something that we would have to take a look at borrowing. I think that would be one of the capital plans that, that the Water and Sewer Team would need to take on over, over the next couple of years. But I mean, to me, that's even more important than replacing the meters. because that has a, that has a direct impact onto our whole infrastructure.
Absolutely.
So...
We, we do line currently, the village does line sewers occasionally. We take the worst ones and chip away at them as we can afford to do that. But again, within our budget, it's tight. So, so yeah, some kind of agreement with COWC moving forward would benefit both sides. To answer your question though, Lucy, we do not, a decision has not been made. When exactly we'll make that? It'll have to be before June of this coming year. What we're gonna do as far as the charge, the rates that we charge the-
So, for, as of, for January 21st, 2026, can, is the, unless there is a rate increase, is it, it, it's not part of the yearly budget? It's just the same until we're notified? Is, is that a use-
Right, it will not change, no.
Okay.
Are you a calendar year or fiscal year?
Fiscal.
They're fiscal.
June to, yeah.
So, they go June to June.
July to June.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so that's why we wouldn't see it until the July timeframe.
Okay.
If there was gonna be an increase.
Okay. Nope, that's-
But you would know by when? When would you, when do you, when would you set rates?
When does COWC set rates?
Well, we don't, it's, again, it's, you need to do a analysis. We don't have a set time.
I was, I'm just kind of thinking in terms of, for your, because you guys are on a calendar year budget, is if you knew that they were going to implement, you know, if they were gonna, if definitely by July 1st that they were implementing new rates, you could potentially budget for essentially a half-rate increase this year.
Yep.
For 2026. But, if you don't really know until it happens, then-
So, it's a discussion we need to have.
Yes, because it affects, I'm sure it affects Oakland's budget too.
Right, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
So, one last little comment. Someone had mentioned, you know, the street sweeper. That actually is not owned by the village. It's, well, it is. But, it's within the water and sewer. It's a stormwater item. Because cleaning the gutters keeps those leaves out of the stormwater. And yeah, it may not be the best piece of equipment, but it's, it's paid for through the stormwater. And that budget just happens to be doing well. So, that wouldn't, unfortunately, that wouldn't help us get rid of that.
And you're generally required to, by DNR, you're mandated to do that.
Well, this is true too.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
Any questions?
No, thank you, I appreciate it. Appreciate the input.
Thank you, Steve. You helped a lot on our, all my follow-up stuff from my morning meeting, so.
So, your worksheet is going to state whatever their rates are right now?
It's gonna, it's gonna have to.
I'll tell you, yeah, really, I'll tell you no.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Ellers?
Thank you, Casey.
Yeah, very much.
I don't have anything else except for, well, I have some homework yet to follow up with you and Brian on from this morning.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, as I said, Brian will be, Brian will be here for the November meeting. And then, I will deliver the sewer rate, rate analysis. And I think you're gonna hear something a little bit about that project in a moment, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll continue, can continue on with our utilities.
We'll go on to nine, nine B here. Discussion and possible action on Rockdale regionalization.
Thank you, Casey.
Mr. Castillo.
Yes, all right. So, I'm here to talk, to talk about the agreement.
Can you introduce yourself, Matt?
Yeah, sorry. Matt Castillo with MSA Professional Services.
Thank you.
Yep. So, to give you, to give everybody background, if you're not familiar with this agreement, Rockdale has, has their own treatment plant. They did a facility plan. And they determined that regionalization is the most cost-effective solution for them. So, they went after some funding with DNR, and they got a good amount of funding. And then, they bid the project. And now, they're in the agreement stage where we have to finalize this to make sure that you guys are protected from anything that would go wrong and, and costs and stuff like that. So, we worked with general engineering. That's who represents them on the engineering side. And then, we also worked with your village attorney, Jane, to help with some of this language. At the last Water and Sewer and Stormwater Board meeting, there were a lot of, a lot of good comments. I took those comments and incorporated them into here. And then, had Jane review it again. Got that over to general engineering for their review as well. There were no comments back on that. And so, that's where, that's the stage we are right now.
I read, I read through this, and you did incorporate a lot of the stuff that we had talked about, which is great. So, where Rockdale would be responsible for the Forest Main all the way to Main Street and that the Village of Cambridge would not be responsible for it once it hits our city limits. Because they're the only ones using it, and the only reason we're putting it is them. So, they'd be responsible for it. I did see one, something that I thought was a typo, Matt, in the contract.
Yeah.
If you go to item 11 dot 3 dot 2.
Yep.
If you find where it says "be if the parties..."
Oh, to another date.
And then, and then go, it's the sentence after that. It's the sentence after that "be if the parties agree." It should say "if the village fails," because this is the default by the village section. So, if the village fails or refuses to correct the violation, then Rockdale has the permission. So, like, the first paragraph was if Rockdale defaults. And the second paragraph was if the village defaults. And, and right there, it's "if the village doesn't." So, I think that if instead of Rockdale, it should say village.
Yep, okay.
And we should probably, on that note, how 11 point 3 point 1 says "default by Rockdale", should 11 point 2 point, 11 point 3 point 2 say "default by Cambridge" instead of just "village"?
I think we're referred to as village.
Oh, is that how we are referred to in all-
Yeah, it's defined earlier, yeah.
Okay, got it.
That's how we're viewed in the document, yep. Okay. So, that, so in reading through, like, the whole thing, that was the only thing that was glaring to me that stood out. Otherwise, I thought everything was good, except for, you know, what's highlighted in the yellow. Or we're still missing some information.
Yep, yep. And that's, that's what was said earlier, was some of the rate stuff, figuring out that. Making sure that everything is whole on your guys' end, so. So, the things we added was, we talked about volumes. There are some questions about the pumping and stuff like that, so that was added in here. I added some velocity information because velocity is important in a wastewater pipe. I added corrosion information here because that would be a concern. I added chemical addition information as well. And so, if there's problems within your system, but also if there's problems at the regional plant, COWC plant. And then, ultimately, a lot of the strengths, the wastewater strength limits ultimately fall back on the ordinance. So, everything should jive with the ordinance. If you were to update the ordinance, it would automatically apply to here.
So, Steve, if you look at the packet, the contract's included in there, if you want to review that. And then, if you have any concerns, if you just let Lucy know.
Yep. And then, so we did meet this morning with Ellers and Matt and myself. And the rate case study is, is pretty close to, to being finalized. We have, there's a few things. I was hoping that we'd have it done for today. I will let you know that there was a delay getting the requested information from Rockdale. I think they've got that over a week from Friday. So, not this past Friday, but the Friday before.
Yep.
And, so, that has delayed it a little bit. And then, one of the kind of questions of how to do that connection fee. And so, I, I had to get Brian from Ellers some more information regarding that.
Sarah, another thing that was updated was the, that we will be billing them monthly, not quarterly. So, that got included as well, that we had talked about.
But, I do believe that we should be good to go November 11th. I feel confident.
Yeah, I think as long as the rate information is all in there. And I believe Ellers now has all the, all the information.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And so, from a protecting the village standpoint, I, I believe you're solid there. And we've gone back a couple forth, a couple, a couple times back and forth to make sure that we included everybody's comments, so.
Could, when we discuss this at the next meeting? Because that's when we would then sign off of it, off on it. Water and Sewer is not gonna meet before, we officially have Water and Sewer people from the Water and Sewer Commission? Anybody who wants to come and speak, be able to speak about this? Any concerns they have or comments during that meeting?
So, why not?
Okay.
For that agenda item, yeah.
Yeah, I, if we, if we can make it official, so like, if Steve or Matt Houston or-
Yeah, anybody on Water and Sewer.
Yeah, anybody on Water and Sewer would want to go.
On a separate note, I do have a request for a special Water and Sewer meeting.
Okay.
I don't know if we can add that agenda item too.
Okay.
But anyways, all right.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else, Matt?
No, I don't know if we need to make a motion for approval pending Ellers information in here or what you guys want to do there. I know that they want to review it as well, Water and Sewer.
Well, Water and Sewer is not gonna meet before the next village board meeting.
Yeah, but we'll have a special meeting, I believe, before that.
Okay. But, that's not guaranteed.
No, no. I, and the thing I'm talking about a special meeting is completely separate. And the Water and Sewer Committee did state that they are okay with the village board making the final determination. And we will invite whoever's able to attend.
I think as long as we can invite anybody from the Water and Sewer Board who wants to speak to it during that meeting, I think we'd be fine. But, I don't know that we, I don't, I don't know that I'm comfortable making a motion if we don't have the numbers in here.
Yeah, I completely agree with that.
So...
Nope, that's fair.
We'd have to wait for the next meeting for the numbers anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, 100%. That's up to you guys, so.
All right. Any questions for Matt? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you, Matt.
All right. Moving on to nine C, discussion and possible action on the fee schedule.
That's me. Okay, give me a second to bring that up. So, I know I brought this to Plan Commission. I brought this item to the board as a draft, asked for input. I didn't get any input from committee members or trustees. But, I did get a lot of help from MSA, from our building inspe, MSA Building Inspectors. And then, just really doing research on what other municipalities are charging. And then, actually, Ellers assisted as well, Steve, who does our Planning and Zoning Administration. There were a lot of fees that the Village of Cambridge was not charging. And I tried to make it as easy to follow by color coordinating it and putting it, you know, grouping it by if it's a building inspection or if it's a public works permit or a utility permit. But, these rates are very much the, in line with what other communities in Dane County and surrounding the Village of Cambridge are charging. Some of the new fees, which I believe I've shared with notary services. I had someone come in today to have a document notarized. And I let her know that if the village board does approve this going forward, that will be a $15 fee per document. It's like a very simple action to do, but the village ensures the two notaries that we have. We have to pay for a bond. Those, that's myself and the clerk are both notaries. We have to also keep up our credentials to stay notarized. There's a test involved, there's payment. And so, again, it's something that we have not paid. I personally would like to have appointments set up for that because we just stop whatever we're doing and, and do it when someone comes in. But, Land Division, those are all new fees. If you look at Land Division, which is in blue, we did not have any fees for that. I think the village just kind of paid for, for all of the legal services for that. What else do we have?
Sorry, do we, do we have, can we see it sound well? Do we have dog licenses in here somewhere?
I was just looking for that. Yep, they should be in here. Now, that will be updated, that's the one, that will be updated because we have not been given the new rate for Dane County or Jefferson County yet. So, the one fees, the fees that have been adjusted on our fee schedules in the past, every December or at the end of November, have been the dog licenses, but we don't have that yet.
So, I would have expected to see those under other, and I'm not seeing them there. So, Lucy, you just may want to double-check that.
Yeah, I'm not seeing them either. Okay. And I might, and my apologies, I might not have included those because we're waiting. And this, currently, we cannot, we cannot change that fee until January 1st for the dog licenses. A lot of these building permits, building inspection, these, a lot of these fees we have just never charged for. I did increase a conditional use permit with something new that was brought to the trustees this year in 2025. We never had a, I'm sorry, not conditional use permit. Comprehensive Plan Amendment application, that was a new application. We put the fee on that as $350. As I'm learning and doing all of this planning and development, the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment itself is $700, just to publish it in the paper. So, again-
You've got $600 on this document?
So, I increased, yes. And then, we have the rezoning application I also increased. Now, why didn't I put over 700? Because usually with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, then you're doing a rezone application as well, which can all be part of the same public hearing.
Got it.
So, that's, I'm not trying to-
You're not double-dipping?
Exactly, exactly. So, it was done thoughtfully, but again, $350, when just for the publication, it's double that.
Right.
That's just one example. Even like a CSM applications, again, anything involving a public hearing. I'm learning about how expensive that is to do those publications. And a lot, especially when it's two to three weeks that it has to go in the paper.
Yep. So, what action did you want us to take on this tonight?
I, I would like approval so that this can be implemented. And then, we will have, also have to do a revise, revision of this once the dog license fees for Jefferson and Dane County are given to us in November or December. But, I would like to, we have a lot of development pieces going. I've made all the developers I'm working with aware of this. And anything that has been paid and submitted up until today is going off of our past fees. Anything new beginning tomorrow, I would like to be able to implement this as well as all of our building permits. Based off the current fee schedule we have for our building permits, we will be in the, in the red. Which, we did know that going forward, that that's why this needed to be updated.
Trustee Hollenbeck will make a motion to approve the updated fee schedule as printed in our packet.
Show us a second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any comments? I guess Tom and I have, Lucy, is there some way that we can get some of these fees incorporated in your new online payment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So, for online payments, the one difference between utilities and the other payments through PSN is through utilities, the, our utilities is paying for the fee, for the rate payers. But, for all other areas like dog, dog licenses, building permits and whatnot, that's all going to be on the, on the applicants or what have you. But, no, all of these things will be able- But no, all of these things will be able to be paid through PSN, and each link will have all of the specific information regarding fees.
Okay. Steve, you have a question?
Can I comment now, or do I have to wait until public?
We got, go ahead.
I think our connection fee is $1,250 for a new user on our sewer, which helps pay for expansion of the treatment plan.
And the fee is 1,500.
I thought I'm reading 500.
I thought I read 1,500 for that.
Connection to existing sewer, five, 250.
Yes, so that is a permit fee, that's not for, that is not part of a new construction.
Okay.
So, nope, the connection fee that you're, for a new build, that's actually going to go up to 1,500.
Okay.
So there are some, there's like sewer access for non-residents. I don't know if we will ever come across that, or connect to existing sewer.
In the mixed-use area, it could happen.
Exactly, I would rather have those fees than, than not have them.
Yeah.
Because then how do we fairly charge somebody? And then we have to go and put all this into place and just eat that.
Right.
Some other things that I imagine you probably took into consideration is like, some of these fees would need like a legal sign-off, so you took into consideration legal that goes along with that.
Yes.
As well as any kind of, you know, anything that you're posting in the paper would mean that we're all together, we're probably have a public hearing, so that's all of us, plus the administrator, so all those. Again, we don't want to fee people out of Cambridge.
No.
But we also need to start looking at that aspect as well, of what we've been letting go for so long, pro bono, you know, the Village will cover it, the Village will cover it, now is kind of catching up with us, so we've just got to be cognizant of that. But with that being said, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Lucy on the fee schedule?
Is the dog licensing one the only one that we're looking at that would be adjusted? Otherwise, these would be set for, like, immediately, or is this 2026?
I would like these to be implemented, starting to, you know, immediately, effective immediately.
Okay.
Based on your conversations with developers?
Absolutely, and like I said.
Yep.
Yeah. And I've made them all, all well aware, too, and even puts.
That's in the motion, that it's ASAP?
Oh.
Or, effective immediately.
Yeah, yeah, so I will, I will amend my motion to include the phrase "effective immediately."
Sarah? All right, so we have a motion and a second amended as such. Can you read back the motion, please?
Absolutely, so motion by trustee Hollenbeck to pass the updated fee schedule, effective immediately, seconded by Sarah Schultz. And actually, I'll put "as presented," the updated fee schedule as presented.
Okay.
Effective immediately, seconded by trustee Schultz.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Updated fee schedule is approved. Moving on to nine D, discussion of possible action on fire EMS fourth quarter payment. Who wants this, Kristen or Lucy? Or both?
Kristen.
Doesn't matter.
Can I just make, can I just make a statement on this?
Yes.
Before we even start? I don't know how we can approve this when we don't have the money to pay for it, so I don't think we can approve this until we have an agreement to get that loan.
I mean, that's fair, but it is a contract that we have to pay, so.
Okay, so we were given this on the 17th, and so Kristen, what, what is the last date that we can pay this? Just, just throw that out there for me.
You're going to make me math?
I can't do any more math.
It says due on receipt.
No, we have, we have that.
For the IGA, we have 60 days.
We have 60 days.
And just for full transparency, the reason that it's imperative that we pay it, because we have, after that 60 days, we incur what fee?
18%.
18%.
Right, but if we got this on October 18th, we, 60 days is December, December 18th. So, I mean, as soon as we know that we have the loan, I, I will say, yes, we'll pay this. Because if we don't, we don't have the money to pay this.
Fill me in from the last meeting, where was that? What was the discussion on?
The borrowing?
Yeah.
I can, I could give you an update, I did in the, in the weekly recap, but just to let you guys know, everything has been submitted to bank first. I really hoped Friday or Monday that I would have gotten the final paperwork to bring to you guys today, and that did not happen. Verbally, they did agree to match the Bank of Deerfield's percentage interest rate and fees.
Oh, great.
Which is, yep.
Yeah, that's great.
And, and I also gave them the updated amount of the $480,000. They requested the 2022 final audit report and 2023 final audit report, also all the trustees' names and, you know, just some of our financial numbers, got them everything. And I am just waiting to hear from my contact at bank first, but it, everything is, is on track, just waiting for that. And they want it as a resolution on, on the.
Yeah, which is, which is they're going to give you.
Yep.
The resolution language.
Yep.
So that we can have that at the next meeting, hopefully?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
That was our unders.
Refresh my memory on the third quarter payment, we took that money from where?
So we did have, that was part of our, in our general fund fees that we had.
So we're in the negative, though, right? About 67K?
Absolutely, we're in the negative for the fired EMS line item.
What was budgeted?
Yeah.
Yes, we're well over six, because 201,000-ish was budgeted for 2025, and we've paid, I can't do the math right now, but, so we paid the three payments.
Almost 600,000.
Yeah.
If you take the 147 times three.
Yes.
Almost 600,000.
Yes.
Okay. So I think you're on, on track, Paula, we, we need to get the information on that loan, which should be our November meeting?
Absolutely.
November 11th?
And if for any reason the trustees want to, I mean, if you guys are all fine waiting until November 11th, that's totally fine, I will communicate to all of you the minute that I have been ready for trustee's signatures and whatnot, I will communicate that with you guys. I really do feel that it could be this week.
So I will make a motion to put this on a future agenda item for the November 11th meeting. How does that put you, Kristen, from a fire and EMS standpoint financially?
The other three municipalities have paid, so.
We just need, we need to be, we need to make sure we have money in the bank.
Probably have the money in the bank, yeah.
Yeah.
So, hopefully enough to borrow against the line of credit.
All right. So do I have a second for motion?
I'll second. Trustee Hollenbeck will second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to push this to the November 11th meeting, the fourth quarter payment. What is the amount? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passed. Moving on to E, nine E, discussion of possible action, I'm moving to one monthly meeting. Lucy and I had initially discussed this because conversation, Sarah, you had brought up something of the fact that, you know, we were kind of meetinged out, and people are, we go to a lot of meetings, and initially, I didn't really say much about it, but then it kind of festered in my head a little bit, and, and I asked Lucy to kind of check the, the area municipalities and what they do on, on the regular for, for meetings. And it also ties in with some cost savings, too, because if we meet just once a month versus twice a month, we don't have to pay the per diem, we don't have to pay the extra fees for filming and all this other.
Staff costs.
Yeah, the other, other, yeah, exactly, staff costs and everything else, so. So then that discussion kind of opened up other discussions about combining other, you know, other groups, Water and Sewer, other, yeah, other committees. I would ask that we hold off on the committee combining until the next, the next session, you know, April, you know, that, that way, if we are going to discuss that, we can have that discussion before we have, make the committee assignments. Because right now, if you do that, it's going to, it's going to mess up a lot of things because you have chairs here, chairs there, and, and everything else, so. So I would, I would ask that your tension just go on to the, the keeping it one month, one meeting a month. Like I said, there are many municipalities, larger and smaller than ours, that, that do one meeting a month, and, you know, kind of look at it from a fiscal standpoint, as well as a burnout standpoint, you know?
But how long is that one meeting going to be, then? I mean, because the, because the last Village Board meeting, we were here till 10:00.
Yeah.
I mean, this one is, it's, this one, we hit the two-hour timer, right? So this one, we've already been going two hours. If we only meet once a month, I, I just don't know how we.
They're only paying us for one, one long meeting, as opposed to two meetings.
But it's still, so, so it would be, it would still be four hours they're paying us for.
Not us. We don't get paid for the hour.
Per meeting.
We get paid per meeting.
We'd still be paying Lucy, Lucy.
No, she gets.
If it's a four-hour meeting.
She gets.
Yeah, and I know she's salaried. Okay, so we'd still be paying for Melissa's time, for four hours, whether it's in two meetings, or if it's in one meeting. I just don't know how, I don't know, I just, I just don't think we can be as responsive to the needs of the community if we don't meet twice a month.
I think one thing where I would be in favor of doing this is, this puts a lot of onus on the committees to do the work and do their process first, and then we don't have to have personnel meeting discussions at our board meeting, we don't have to have Water and Sewer meeting discussions at our board meeting, it's simply presenting whatever the topic is that needs to come forth, and then we vote, you know, we're able to vote. But I think it puts a lot of.
Bonus and responsibility on those committee chairs.
And it validates the purpose of having committees, I think. Otherwise, it seems like we're having committee meetings, and then we're bringing back, and we're still having full discussions, you know, as a board, so.
So then, so then, what you're telling me is if I want input on something, I need to go to every committee meeting?
No. I'm not saying that we can't have discussion, but we have lengthy discussions on, on topics, policies, procedures, things along those lines, that should be, that should start in the committee first.
I would, I would agree with that, and so part of what Kristen and I, my discussion is at the Fall League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference, this is something I brought to our roundtable and numerous presenters as well, and many municipalities, and, and I know of one, a couple nearby, similar sizes to us, the committee vets and the, the trustees have to trust those committee members, too, as well.
How many people are on those boards? You're talking about Nasha?
No.
Or, or NINA? You're talking about a much larger municipality.
I'm talking about Deerfield and, and I'm talking about Marshall, and, and the Village of Cottage Grove, no, I'm talking to local ones, too. I did get a lot of information from the city of NINA, but my point is that as trustees, you can't take it all, and it's okay to have some questions when a committee brings forth an agenda item, if there's questions, but it's also going to be on the agenda, so the questions don't always need to be brought up here, they can be brought up as well to that chair before, to, to, you know, help streamline the process as well.
But then you get into an issue of walking quarms, Lucy. If I go to a chair, and Kristen goes to a chair, and Chris goes to a chair, we've got a walking quarm.
With simple questions, not, not asking for actions or stances, if it's simply asking for clarity and questions, you can do that.
That's a really thin line to walk.
It is, it is, and they can come through, through.
I was going to say, the questions can go through staff, too.
Go through staff.
Like we do with board meetings.
Whatever staff member is that is part of that committee, go through me and just share, like I already do, like with the updates on developments and just different things. But that is a good tool, tool to also reduce our, our meeting time. And then the other, I guess, big question in the past, when I first started here, and I brought that up, was how are the bills going to get paid? That's a future, that's a, down the road in this meeting, but many municipalities do weekly check runs, I can post those as well, you know, how we have our meetings on, on our website, we can post that, those inform, the check runs on there, so that it's public information and shared with everybody. And then our clerk has created a jot form, who has been working on a jot form, so it gets everybody's signature, but yet there's enough allotted time that you guys can come back with questions, like what loan is this, or, you know, what was this expense before signing off on that.
So is that going to create more work for you, though, if you're getting extra emails, extra questions versus having the discussions here?
Not necessarily, and one of the difficult parts is with just having the two Village Board meetings, we're trying to cram in all our payments to twice a month, and Water Sewers cramming in their payments to their, for their one meeting, and that's how you saw, you see water payments filling over into our check runs. This will take that pressure off so that we can stay on top, and that we don't get behind on bills, and that, so that everything doesn't have to be put in. I expect that part of it to be easier, and as you're looking at those weekly ones, or even the, the committee, I expect everybody, even if you're not on the specific committee, to be reviewing those agendas and what they're talking about, and if you have questions, you know, reach out to me, and I can, you know, share that, those questions, and get, you know, feedback from the chair regarding said issues, it's, I do feel it's doable.
Can, can you, can you start sending the agendas for every committee then, to all of the board members?
Yes.
Because right now, that's not happening.
No, that's not, and part of the reason is that confused a lot of people, so if I would send them the agenda, and they'd be like, I don't.
Not on that committee.
So, as long as everybody knows, absolutely.
So, so if we went to, because we're talking about two different things.
Yes.
That, if we went to the billing once a week, then we wouldn't have to discuss it at all at the Village Board meetings?
No, we wouldn't necessarily, and like I said, I want those checks.
Take that item out.
Yep, I would like those check runs on, just like we do, so it's going to say, instead of a meeting, it's going to say, you know, weekly check run, and have the attachment.
So that's just, but that's a separate agenda item in a minute?
Let's go.
Okay, all right.
For the one meeting a month, I know for November and December, those second, those two second meetings, it's Thanksgiving, it's Christmas week.
We don't, we don't, we don't cancel the Thanksgiving week one.
Okay.
We, we have, we only cancel the, we only cancel the one at the end of December, traditionally is what we've done.
Okay.
But there's like, you know, like I mentioned before, there's, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of good people up here as trustees in the past, and they've grinded their wheels, and they've, you know, whether it's the committees they're on, or whatever the case is, they get meetinged out, they have to juggle families and other things, I think that would kind of let some of that pressure out a little bit. Again, we're not trying to skirt any kind of responsibilities or anything, I just think with, with the volunteerism, the way it is here in Cambridge, I mean, we have two, two write-ins, writing candidates on the board, so I think we need to alleviate some of that pressure from being overly meetinged out to, and I think this is one, one way we can alleviate some of those pressures.
And so I'll point to more work on the communication. One of the factors is it's one agenda, one packet, one set of minutes to do.
Seven pages.
Packets are never gonna go down. But, so-
Well, it can be tried, and if it doesn't work, you go ahead.
The increasing communication might, might, you know, might be a lot, but then again, saving two to three hours of working on minutes a month, right there, I mean, it takes-
Yeah, but you're gonna increase, you're gonna increase, you're gonna increase meetings for subcommittees. Because there are a lot of subcommittees that aren't, that don't have a regular meeting time. I will just say, let's bring it directly to the board, instead of having the subcommittee meet for this one thing.
That's how we get into a situation where we get thrown back at us, that we haven't had an audit and finance meeting for ten, near eleven months. Because, justifiably so, it just came to the full board, right?
Right.
Instead of having a separate meeting, and paying for that separate meeting, we brought it to the whole board.
So you're not gonna increase the, you're not gonna decrease the number of meetings in a month then? Let's, let's just be clear that that's, that's the case.
We'll decrease one village board meeting.
And we'll increase-
No. Why would we, why would we increase?
I mean, I guess, I would say increase.
Because when, when I have one item for, for public works, I just bring it to the full board, instead of having a public works meeting.
If you honestly have one item for public works, I think that that would be fair to bring it to the village board, if it's literally one item-
For that one meeting.
For that one meeting.
So, we can continue this conversation, but I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to, to move our village board meeting to one monthly meeting. And I entertain a second.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion.
I just, I, we have so little opportunity to hear from our constituents, that to me, hearing from them twice a month is really important. Yeah, that's my concern.
I see both sides. I'm very split on the decision. I mean, yeah, ideally, it'd be great to meet once a month. I think that'd be great, but, I mean, you have good points. And as slow as some things move, it's like, to only vote on things once a month, might make things move even slower.
Right.
So, I don't know.
I mean, when we think about all of the developers who have to bring things in front of this board, and if they miss one meeting, then they have to wait an entire month, maybe two months, depending on other preliminary meetings they happen to have. And, and again, as Sarah said, as slow as things happen, it's gonna make it even slower.
But all the developers' items go to plan commission first. The majority of all the developers' items go to plan commission first, which is the day before a village board meeting. And automatically, all of those items automatically go on the village agenda for the very next day. Which I'm not a fan of, by the way, because it's two very late nights for myself.
But Lucy, there are times when they've met with the plan commission, they have to do a little bit more work, have a little bit more information. Plan commission agrees with it, with these contingencies, and they need time to work on those contingencies, and then they come to the second meeting in the month. Now, they'll delay that development for another two weeks. I, I just, I just think, I think, I think village government was slow enough already.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put your flag on development, our development days are gonna be waning here fairly soon, because we're gonna be to the point, yeah, where we can't, we're not gonna be able to develop anymore, so.
If we didn't have so much on all of our agendas, I, I think you, I could, you could, if all of our meetings were done in an hour, you guys, I could easily agree with, sure, maybe we can go down to once a month. But they're not.
I, I just think it puts a lot of the onus on the, whoever the chairs are for the committees. They're gonna have to do the work. So.
Is the expectation, is that they're going to be a regular cadence of committee meetings? So they're going to always be scheduled for-
Particular days.
Absolutely. So, on the last, at our last village board meeting, which maybe that wasn't too much, of the combining of the committees, they absolutely would have, like, public works is just as needed right now. Audit and finance is just as needed, personnel's just as needed. They are not regularly scheduled. I would like that. One of the things with our economic development committee, due to committee members and schedule conflicts, we've, for many months, had to just keep moving and picking different dates to get, to have a forum. And one of our, the community members and business owners said, if you can give me a set, a set date and time that you're gonna stick with every month, I will put it on my calendar, and I will be there. But when you switch then to Thursday, and then the next weekend, economic development used to always be the first Monday of every month. By the end of the summer, we were to the last week of the month.
Yeah, I think ideally-
And so, by having that structure-
Ideally, list-wise, when I'm, when I'm doing committee assignments for, in the next April, when I'm doing committee assignments, when I, when I pick a chair for a committee, I'm also going to give that chair when their meetings are. What, you know, what, when during the month.
So, so this isn't a cost savings for less meetings? Because you just said-
It's a cost savings.
You just listed three meetings, you just listed three meetings that don't have regular meeting dates, and you now said, we're gonna have regular meeting dates for them.
Well, if there's nothing on the agenda, why have a meeting?
Exactly.
You have the autonomy as the chair to say, well, we don't have anything on the agenda, so we're-
You don't have to meet, just to meet.
But that's on the chair.
But by having that structured date and time, in place, and having the, the room available, and I guess, it, it also makes it very easy for the staff-
If you don't have anything for personnel, then you don't, you don't have a meeting.
Personnel meetings, for audit and finance, and for all of those, I waste so much time going, here's the dates.
Who's available?
Who's available? I can't, it's, it's a waste of my, my, my time. It, it is, it, yes, by having that, again, nothing for public works this month, or, you know, there isn't anything, or there's only one thing, it can wait till next month, it's not urgent. Absolutely. Can absolutely cancel that. With proper notice and enough time.
I'm, I'm, I'm one hundred percent not on board with going down to one meeting a month. So, I mean, we can, we can talk as, as much as you guys, you guys want. I think for constituencies and transparency, and so that people know what we're doing, I think it's important to keep two, two times a week.
I guess I'm not understanding the, the transparency discussion, because if we're not having discussions outside of, we're not, you know, making decisions outside of meetings-
The appearance of transparency.
But then, we have the, we have the ability for, for constituencies to come to the committee meeting.
There are open meetings.
Which very few come to many of our committee meetings. Now, audit and finance, I would say, that's a different gig. But like, personnel committee, economic development, we're lucky if we get one or two people. So this would, hopefully, urge our-
Do you post those, do you post those committee meetings?
Absolutely. Anyone that signed up, that the agenda, just like for the village board, is shared.
All right, any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
No.
Schultz.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Trendo.
No.
Dan Brune.
Yes.
I wanted to say no.
What was it?
She said yes, but she said you wanted to say no.
Oh, you wanted to say no?
I wanted to say no.
Okay. I can switch, so we are, we are tied.
So it doesn't go forth.
Got it.
So we will continue on with two meetings a month.
You guys can bring it up again when Brian's here, because that seventh vote might have made a difference. So.
So in the last, when, in the last packet, it was, it was also moving the, this meeting to Thursday? Is that-
Well, that was because I was-
For the one meeting, it's gonna be a Thursday?
That was because I was also trying to have, have said dates for those meetings that we don't have, which, that's been thrown out the window, so I guess, if this ever passed, I just thought we would do the, the second Tuesday of the month. Again, that would be for you guys to decide.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
Do you want to bring this up next time when Brian is here?
It could be a future, Jen.
I don't know.
I don't wanna keep going back to the well. I can see your points about transparency and, and everything, but I also, I don't, I don't wanna, I'm not board members either, so. And as you can see, we do have a volunteerism issue here in this, in this village. Moving on to, let's see where we're at here.
We're, we're on the village hall hours.
Yeah, village hall hours. Um, F. Discussion of possible action on village hall hours.
Okay, so. I, we actually, I came across a memo actually from you, Chris, of, must have had talks with our previous administrator about village hall hours, and then, in a staff meeting, we had a discussion, and we've had some different issues. So, this, that, this is kind of where this came from. With all of our new-
Upgrading, all kinds of mechanisms.
Upgraded all of our IT, computer programs, a lot of training is needed. So we've had some training with PSN, with Workhorse, with a new utility meter reading. I don't even know how to articulate that. And so, those are during normal business hours, and so what we have been doing is, I'll post on the, the village website that, that date, and we'll put a sign, we'll lock the door, we'll put a sign, so that we, that staff could participate in the training. And I, we've had a few people that were upset, and they just wanted to drop off their utility payments. And we have a payment drop box, but they didn't want to use them. And so, so anyways, we, we thought, I, proposed, our proposed office hours, by doing nine to four, then from seven to nine, or seven thirty, I think it would be seven to nine, that staff, we could do trainings, and most of the people we're working with start at eight AM. So that would allow us to not have to have a disruption in the middle of a workday. Our trainings that we have to do, for the most part, require all staff members.
So we're talking about customer service hours, or-
Yes. Yep, so no, the, the, so the, the staff members would have, yeah, two hours in the morning to, to training, to do meetings, and also to do tasks such as payroll and-
Minutes.
Minutes uninterrupted.
The, so here's my concern with this, with your proposal of, of nine to four.
Yes.
When I worked full time-
Yes.
Out of the village-
Yes.
I would come at seven thirty- And do my village work. Or, I would come at five thirty on Tuesday, because I knew you opened. So if we could have at least one day a week, where we have a morning hour, like prior to eight o'clock, and one day a week where we had after four o'clock, or after five o'clock, so people driving home, if I worked in Fort, and I needed to do something, I could get here at five thirty, and, and be able to have that address before you closed at six.
Absolutely. So a few things, a few caveats to this, is, one of the things I disliked with, like, tax payment time and in-person absentee voting, is we never adjusted our hours for either of those two items. Those are, those are, we see the most traffic. So when it comes to tax payment processing, I want to do a survey with community members. I am absolutely open to even having a Saturday eight to noon, that we're open to take payments, extend, you know, a few work nights to seven PM. That, same for the in-person absentee voting. Even the, the nine to six on Tuesdays, a lot of people that work outside of Cambridge, even six o'clock is difficult. The past, I, past year with the in-person absentee voting, and people that wanted to drop off, I just made appointments. If they could not come within hours, they could reach out to me, I'm usually here anyways. And so, we can do appointments as well to, to work with, to work with our, you know, constituents, the members of the community here. But, you know, six o'clock on Tuesdays, from four to six, we maybe get one person on average. And so, if we don't have, and I thought, I think the thought was, that makes a lot of sense. We have, you know, we have water sewer meetings at six PM, we have village board meetings at, at six thirty. So stay open, because we have to stay, most of them stay anyways. But all of the other weeks that we stay till six o'clock, there's very little traffic. Fridays, we've been tracking, on Fridays, we get maybe three people that come in on Friday. And the majority of it is to drop off their water bills. Very little business. And so, just by streamlining this, it'll allow just more efficient processes for, during the workday. And so, that is kind of where we're looking for that, but as far as start, you know, being open at seven thirty, or even seven, one day a week, I think that is perfectly acceptable. And then, if we can remain open until six, six PM as well, one night a week, I can tell you, there's very little, little traffic after, after four o'clock.
But that might be the only time that some people can come, you know what I mean? Even though, even if it is just a couple of people, it might be their only opportunity to come. I don't know.
I mean, and right now, it's three of the four Tuesdays, we've got, we've got a meeting at six thirty.
With your change, with the change to be scheduled, you may see additional traffic as well. And with, you know, to the fullest point, like, I work in Madison, and if you were not open until nine o'clock, I would have to take at least an hour, and probably more off of work, just to conduct business here. And as a public-facing entity, I don't, I, I don't feel good about having the office not open until nine o'clock.
But the potential of on a Friday, of at like seven to noon.
I, yeah, so for me, it's like, yeah, I don't care which day of the week, and, and if you give them one, one morning, one after, because then I can play my schedule right fast. And, you know, I think that's doable.
So you wanna rework this with, with that in mind?
Yeah, no, I, I'm open to your feedback, if you think we have, have somewhere to make a motion, to make any, any adjustments. You know, if we do do like a seven to-
I could do that, I could make a motion.
Seven to noon on, on Fridays, and if you want-
So, let, let me make, let me make a question. So, trustee Hollenbeck can make a motion to, to adjust the, the office proposed, the office, to accept the proposed office hours, Monday through Thursday, nine to four, and Friday from eight to noon. With an additional day that allows for a morning prior to eight o'clock time slot, and an additional day that would add an evening time slot. So, I don't care which days you pick, and you might wanna talk to staff to see what's gonna work best.
As long as it's put out there.
That's why I make it, that's why I make the motion that way.
Got it.
Yep. Blackwood, a second.
All right, you have a motion and a second.
I just wanted to give you the- I just wanted to give you the flexibility, Lucy, when you talk to staff to say what's going to work best, which day of the week might work best for we start at seven and which one.
Absolutely. So for a late evening, I think it's going to make more sense to have the Tuesday since we have three meetings a month at six thirty PM on Tuesdays anyways. And then as for a morning, I do like the idea of the Friday morning because not everyone, but a lot, I would say Friday is probably the most frequent for being people to take off. So I think that that would be a good idea to to be open at seven thirty, have seven AM.
And then and then when you make these changes and you post the hours, and then just if you can include a line that says, you know, village staffs available by appointment.
Appointment. Absolutely.
By appointment as well.
Yes.
You know, add something like that. Because then if I was in a bind and I couldn't come in on Friday morning, like I could call you and say, hey, you know, can we do this days?
No, absolutely.
The only thing I would question, I like the idea of the appointment only, but question from a safety standpoint of having just less singles of staff member in the building open or, you know, people coming in.
Well, I would I would I would assume if I'm setting an appointment, that whoever I'm setting an appointment with, they're going to.
Like if it's for, let's say if it's for seven AM.
Right.
One of those other days, we'd make sure we have two staff members.
Right, right. They would just ask somebody else to come in early or something.
Exactly.
I'm the same because Lucy made the statement that she's often here anyways, or, you know, something like that.
No, no, that's that's fair too.
Yeah, I was just making assumption you would ask someone to hang out with you or whatever. Someone.
Can you reread reread the motion, please?
Absolutely. So trustee Hollenbeck made a motion to accept the adjusted Village Hall hours Monday through Thursday, nine to four, and Fridays, eight to noon, with an additional day opening prior to nine AM and an evening past four PM.
Prior to eight AM.
Evening.
Prior to eight AM.
Prior to eight AM, sorry. Thank you. And then evening. I'll put, can I put until six PM? And like I said, when it comes to in-person absentee voting and tax payments, we're going to make more accommodations, which I don't.
That's just for Village Hall, it's not. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. And I like the idea that you you're giving Lucy and her staff some autonomy to to create those days, just as long as it's announced to the public. Also, you can probably put a plug out there while you do that, where people can also start using the online payments and everything as well.
Absolutely.
Moving on to G. Discussion of Possible Actions of Weekly Check Run and Jot Form Approval Process. We wanted to discuss this a little bit, but anything hanging with that?
I would be all for weekly and knowing then we don't have to address it in our meeting.
I agree.
And and then that and knowing that's posted out there, and our constituents can go and look at it on a weekly basis and see, and just like we do, that'd be great.
And so what the plan was, which, Chris, I think we talked about, I think the rest of us talked a little bit at last meeting, was be so Mondays, we the whatever bills that we have would be entered. Then the check run document, which you're used to seeing now, would be sent out to all of the trustees with a JOT form. And then you would have, I believe we're going to say, this has not been a hundred percent, let me know what you guys think is allowable or appropriate amount. But we're thinking either Wednesday, four PM, or we could do Thursday, you know, nine AM, ten AM, what have you, to get responses. But we're also going to have this out and available if anybody wants to come in and look at invoices. And then you're also able to reach out if there's something that you have questions about before signing up on that JOT form as well.
And I won't sign until all the.
Exactly.
And then the bills would be, I think Sarah was going to.
Yes.
I was just going to ask, will the bills still be emailed to us like they like they are currently?
Yeah, that's what.
That's it's all included in that?
Yes. You would get that.
Okay.
Each week instead of just.
And you could pay those on, have them out Friday.
I would really just because Friday is such a shorter day. That's why I wanted to ask, what do you think is a reasonable reasonable amount of time if we gave that check run document to you the Fridays, every other, every other Monday's payroll. So let's keep that in mind. So if we got that out to you guys by two o'clock on a Monday, is Wednesday noon enough time? Or would you like or Thursday, let me say Thursday, ten AM, so that we can.
Thursday, ten AM, and here's why.
Yes.
Because it because it gives me then evenings, that's not a Tuesday.
Yes.
Here, I've already got meetings going on. It gives me two evenings to be able to review those meetings. That's that's why I think I think Thursday is ten AM.
Responses by Thursday, I mean, by Thursday, ten AM. And that way, we're still able to do if there's all of all of that, then we can print the checks.
So then like my question, here's maybe my question.
Yeah.
Once you get a majority, but you wouldn't have to have all of us sign up on it. You just need a majority. So if you get a majority of them on Wednesday, then you could go ahead and do.
I still want everybody to respond whether they approve or don't approve.
Right, we'd still like could approve or not approve.
Because I'm always going to ask the question, well, why can Sarah sign off on it? Before I sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's going to be. If we yell, you know.
But there will be there will be times when everybody's not going to be able to do it because if I'm out in.
Lucy will say, well, she, you know, Paul's in Wyoming.
Yeah, if I'm in Puerto Rico, I'm not going to take time off and it would be via the bills.
Are they going to, are they going to come out at like the same time every week? Okay.
Yes.
Days, I'm guessing?
The the bill run form would come out at my my plan would be two o'clock, the two prime on Mondays.
Right. When do you when do you plan to pay the bills is what I'm asking.
Those would be paid Thursday afternoon then.
Thursday afternoon.
Because if the due date for all of your responses is by Thursday at ten AM. As soon as we're Thursday at ten AM comes every week, expect a response from everybody.
Huh? You can just press a button.
Yeah. And and also, Chris, you don't have to, this isn't for trips for you as well. And because yes, and myself, both you can sign the checks. Again, if you feel that you're able to, want to come in and sign those Thursday afternoon, Chris, you're absolutely welcome to. You want.
Do we have a motion? You were about to make one, Kristi.
I was about to make one. I will make a motion to approve weekly check runs with JOT form approval sign up as through process was.
All right, do it in a second. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other conversation?
I would say let's do it a couple of weeks. And if adjustments need to be made, Lucy, just let us know.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's streamline that here. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, number 10, no action required. Moving on to eleven, new business, discussion of possible action on an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement for EMS services.
So that's the document that I handed out tonight. We talked about this at the four municipality meeting. It would be an amendment to our current IGA, which would allow for the commission to contract out for EMS services, should he be introduced to do so. I know, so there was some discussion at the municipality meeting about allowing each municipality to contract for their own. But what that would do is completely nullify the.
Need for a commission?
The need for, well, for the IGA. So. We can be a commission and allow each municipality to have their own EMS services. So this would allow for the, this is the exact amendment that we brought, Chris, help me out. Last big spring.
And that's the one Lake Mill saw, and they said, like, the verbiage of it, because they wanted the autonomy for their own municipality to choose. So they didn't approve it.
Did all of the commissioners agree to send please to their municipality? And I did have one question, section two, one, 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 to second page. Any contract under the section where a majority vote of commission and approval by each municipality of the district. So that means that means that everybody has to agree at the commission level.
Correct.
Not mean all the individual municipalities have to agree.
It would be a majority at the commission level, a unanimous.
Unanimous after municipal level. All right, that was, I find that very interesting. Because then those of you who believe in it can go to the board meeting of municipality whose person didn't leave it and convince the board that you did think they should.
And it it allows, you know, it allows the boards autonomy, you know, and yeah.
I like it. That's very clever.
So in order to, because that is one of the things we talked about at the commission, the four municipality meeting, was looking at potentially contracting out to happy if we should get some form either college savings or whatnot. And this would be the amendment that would be allowed to the IGA, and it would not have to, the entire IGA would not have to be rewritten. Would have. Does anyone look into costs yet for contracting out? We are starting to. I shouldn't say we're starting to. Yes, we have been. We in order to get complete numbers, we have to speak commission to commission, have to request an RFP. So we need to be able to do that, to go with those numbers.
All right, you make an a motion.
I will make a motion to amend amend. Okay, how do I want to word this? To accept the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement, which allows for contract EMS services.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Jacob.
Motion and a second. Discussion, any other discussion?
Are you looking at contracting? Would you be looking at contracting both? People on state and people on site.
Correct.
Perfect. Which is why the fire department having that extra designation would be really helpful for the cost savings that we would only see if we go.
The high cost savings we would see is if we would not have not had EMS in the building. That is, so discussions at those services to see what their would be as far as that goes. But the with the EMS certification would allow for that that bridge in gap from.
Where somebody could respond more quickly and then we can get the people.
Yep, yeah, while you're waiting for that ALS villain to come in.
Respond more quickly.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the amendment to the IGA, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving to eleven B. Discussion of Possible Action on RFP for Computer Services.
This is so the next three items are just basically give the board taking action, just allow me to start our RFP process. Our computer magic contract is open in April twenty twenty six, and I want to go out and get bids from other other computer IT services to see what else is out there. So that's basically it.
You want to wrap all three into one discussion? Auditing services?
Auditing services, same thing. So our three, the three contract with FOMA, and that is we obviously for, and so same thing, need to go for RFP. And then the last thing, legal service, our current team with left effort, just you don't have the capacity to take us on anymore. And so we've been given some recommendations. But again, RFP, one of my concerns with the legal services is the high cost. So it is effort involved, but it's not a change. It's somebody different for court. Our courts. Our services have been well over budget. So that's been something I've been looking at. And basically cases that go to pre-court, pre-trial phone call are staying open and costing, an example, the three hundred and fifty dollar citation is costing the village like two thousand dollars. So this was something I wanted to do. And now that this doesn't bother, I suffered Rosenbaum, nine of us there update, I prefer from time because I was going to try to split and bring that to your, have all of your attention because I was court working in my previous life, and I don't understand was I remember the amount of citations, the legal fees for that, and were so high. So again, this is just starting the process so I could get bids as, you know, our piece, nothing difficult, but it's time consuming, and there's a process so that I can get these started.
I will make a motion for to allow staff to go up for.
I'm volunteering. I had other questions.
Make a motion and then we go. I'll make a motion to go ahead and have staff start the RFP process for computer services, auditing services, legal services.
Trustee Hollenbeck will speak.
Okay, audit, motion, second, discussions.
What is the RFP, just because I haven't gone through this with the village board before. What is the RFP process? Do you have scoring movement? Do you have something like that? I have two more questions. Is there an RFQ or an RFP process if you don't have an RFP?
Absolutely. So does the village have a proper RFP process? Not that I'm aware of. I have the numerous RFPs for other municipalities. So I will base that off of new, I've done it in the past, is I basically create a proposal of what we're looking for. I'll put it on the list on some local municipalities. It'll be put on our website. We'll see if there's any other websites that are be applicable to post that as well. We have an end date that we would review. Yes, there will be scoring, financials always separate. And then that is pretty much, I mean, it's very long on the assets. I could list that as part of my answer. And the hard part is if you don't get a lot of bids, it makes it actually simplifies it, don't it? But again, there's still decisions that we make. It is okay to contact. Like I'll give you an example. So the current village attorney did recommend a value difference to some learning municipal attorneys that is okay for us as staff to just contact them, to let them know that this has been posted. If they're interested in getting a bid status, we can do some of that. They know to look, they're network searching, and they're looking for it. But that's as much communication as we can have. So again, if there are different firms or regarding any of these services, that is and that is something that can legally be.
That then fall into be like an RFQ or an RFP process or is that?
I don't know what those initials mean.
Oh, request for bid, request for close.
Did you just request for proposals? Could you just request for proposals?
We probably, we probably rubbed all those pieces.
Some towns, they, Oakland specifically, I recall, they, they bring it in, it would all be closed and they would open up bids during the. I think the way we do it is basically, on the agenda, we discuss it, we look at the price points, but we also look at the other amplifying implications that go with it. And, you know, I think our statistics are, you know, seventy thirty, then we go usually with the cheaper option. But there have been some instances, especially in Wolverhampton Super, where we didn't necessarily go with the cheaply, cheap option.
And so if that is too for the, like, scoring and reviewing, that would be done at the committee level, might as well.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Alright, we've got all three action items taken care of in one file. Moving three to twelve, new business, no access required, I think that's just placeholder, thirteen correspondence.
We did get an email from Jane, we can share that with the board. Just stating, you know, she enjoyed her time here and everything, but she's, she's moving to the environmental world and it is, it is very taxing for her.
That all kind of makes sense, because I've just been having a hard time connecting with the few things that, so they kind of got at the full picture.
We have their services until the end of the year and she's making recommendations and. And I had a really great in-home conversation with her. But she enjoyed her time here at Cambridge, with where she's going and where involved is going, she doesn't really mesh with the service that she could go continue and provide, so. So moving on to our correspondence, anything else moving on, no? Okay, our fourteen public comment. Bill?
Bill, Chris, Philly to Cambridge, just want to make a comment about your financial management plan. You went through, one, your version three, I think that's probably the end of it. Together with all twelve financial plans for my career for working out your Fortune one hundred company, all the way to a small, very small, non-othodox organization. Two glaring things missing in that plan, I mean, just huge glaring, and I think we need to go back and ask them to think about. One is, I think, they didn't ask for, they were telling us to raise taxes, how to raise rates, but they didn't touch all of, you know, how to increase our revenue base. There have to be things that can be done as a village, as an entity, to increase tax base, generate more taxes. Other cities, other municipalities are doing that, how's expenses in that area, they should be bringing ideas to you guys, so here's how you can increase your tax base, not just raise taxes. How do you get more development? Well, how do you do that?
Economic Development Committee.
You can make all excuse you want, all, fine.
Alright, your turn.
I sent a list of items to Chris two, three weeks ago with some suggestions, didn't hear response back. So I can think they're missing, is water, other, municipality is doing to develop efficiencies and control costs. Nothing else, presentation of fish reducing costs, how do you become more efficient? How do you use technology, how do you take a, what, do it out there to increase efficiencies? Just you could tell a ten thousand dollars, what, out of the budget for the water and sewer, you wouldn't have to raise rates in so years. I mean, simple things like that, their answer is just raise rates, you know, we already have huge rates. Let's look at reducing costs, let's do just financial comparison of our utility expenses, this is all other utilities, let's out there. Where are we spending money, where are they spending money, and are they doing things that we should be doing or shouldn't be doing? And the same thing with their own budgets, are they really budget, should, what are the villages spending money on, what are we spending money on? Or maybe we should be spending more money in certain areas, money we do, I don't know, I can tell you the analysis, you don't know. Certain if there is putting a financial plan together for you, that should be included, just a basic financial plan. And then the last thing, that's probably isn't many financial plans, because I think a lot of people to soup, it's already prior. But one thing you guys are missing is how you stay on budget. You've had, if you're back, if you look six years, you're on balance, but you can't stay on budget, a million part one is cash reserves disappeared in five years. Haven't yet balanced your budget, I think one thing, just staying on that budget is entirely different. As I didn't finance refuse to meet when I was on our committee to discuss actual spending, but if you need on track. And the big hole, even, I would think, a advisor could come in and help you figure out how to stay on track. Anyway, just a question.
Alright, any other public comment?
Pepsi Bush five sixty six Cleed Street, Cambridge. I just want to make sure I understand, because I'm sure there are other people at home, perhaps will watch on YouTube, so that will maybe understand. And that Mr. Griffith, so just, they said, Mr. Griffith, you could add hydrants to the water bills without lowering the level amount. So our taxes wouldn't go down, but it would be an additional tax on our water bill. Am I right with that?
I can explain it if you'd like. So, so if we, if we were to move the fire height, because right now the fire hydrants are being, the cost of the, is being freed out of the general funds.
Right.
Our whole fund is taxed by all of us. So, so, if we push that dollar amount onto, if the rate tiers, put it on the water bills, it wouldn't reduce our taxes by that amount. It would just make more money than that general fund available, wouldn't you do, do their taxes by they, pay the fire and EMS, which right now we're having to borrow. That's the argument about moving it, and why your taxes wouldn't go down.
Right, but our water and sewer bills would go up. Substantially, I mean, but a substantial amount, thirty seven fifty five a month.
Yeah, twenty one, almost twenty two dollars a month.
He said four hundred and fifty dollars and fifty five cents a year.
No, twenty dollars, if you saw the documents, and I can show you after the meeting, if you'd like, I can show you some documents. I was just talking, we're just talking about the fire height rate, and that, but that's something different. So what you're talking about, the increase in the rates, did include that, that part, did include your fire safety part.
Because those are different.
Those, just objections for the next ten years, say where, where that increase is going to be, that's what that was. The fire projection part was something separate for that, and that wasn't included in that, in that four hundred and fifteen dollar number, I think we're trying to.
But it is an increase.
I just want to remind you that, myself included, there are a lot of areas that live here, that aren't passing my health anymore. I mean, we've got what we've got. We want to stay here. And it's gotten harder. Oh, let's get it, I, I understand that, but you might be carelessness, you might be watching what's going on. Perhaps, and for, I just want to remind you. Another thing, I talked to Lucy earlier today, and now that, you know, I told her I may have some hard questions to take some comments. No offense to her, I told her, they are personal, I didn't really know her procrastinates. I can know you, to have a treasure administrator, her combined position, that is already a separation duty, a duties and conflict, all potential. Because she's handling all the money all the time. And so, as normally a board would have additional enhanced, obviously, around that. And just wants to know what that process is for you. I want to know, especially if you go to cut a check once a week, where, well, I just, I'll mail this, I'll just mail out this email. Where, and if you have a session, it'll back to me, I mean, we all know how many emails I'll get. And then, of course, it'll back to me, I mean, just know now, for my money, that's what I'm doing. No offense to Lucy, and she knows that, I don't need any of my personal, it's a bad idea, and to come see, I'm a treasure administrator, I have it for my business.
Anyone else for public comment?
Anyone?
Uh, things, just. Do you need specific answers? Ramon Trail, does that count? Phil, things. The EMS invoice, we're always like under the, because of IGA. I read that like a year ago, it's not, oh, it's all, um. I'm, I'm curious, though, invoice that isn't fully substantiated can be sent back, it should be able to be sent back and restart that. Any way, I look at that on what our ability is there, just because they sent you the number, it'd be not me, I go in, just don't mean the clock, the clocks on it. And if it is, just justify it, or just something to wink about, there's. The meeting thing, the reason I yelled out there transparency is because it's tainted to urgency. And I'll go back to the, I calculate real quick, the five eight meter type, we are forty three percent higher than the next highest, five eight meter. Five meter, this is Darf Con, one, and you look at that recommended, it's right, ink doses, or will be nobody living in this town. So, that's a big problem, so, once a month, being paid behind the scenes, you guys are in a position, tomorrow, you're on the firing line, bills for all these people. See, not always a test five, so, it's a tough job, but all keep it under consideration if you go to one meeting, it's just, at least, first, just a big, how many hours are you working a week? We don't, we don't want to lose anyone, but again, also don't want a shooting squad in here, you don't, every minute. With some committees, if you're fishing, yeah, fix it, make the two meeting a week, if they're more efficient. Now, we, we just assume, you're going to push it sitting on the committees if they're already not getting efficient, so fix that. You can't do, you share, are things, we're going paperless, love, are paying for that service, anyway.
We absolutely are paying for that.
Are we paying for this?
Going paperless is a function, and that would save us a little as well, so.
Would it be net savings?
It would be, because I'm right now, just posting, well, that would save us a person.
Let's do that, and let's do it quick. And then, RP, I mean, let's get, let's do, quick, three quotes, sit together, look at them, what they have included, excluded, just, what three excludes the most, don't get it, don't get it, work. I don't think you need to write out a whole, a whole bio, whatever, I want to do that. Thank you.
Alright, what else do we have for public?
Um, yeah, you can absolutely, I don't think, well, you'll, you'll see, and I'll see if the trustees have any answer, but I will get to that with you.
I went to a different board meeting last night, and it involved our church.
Sir, please state your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm, and you are, am I? Five eighteen Allen Street. If on any way, I'm trying to formulate some rules, regulations, attack the congregation, which is something that this church is doing. And in that conversation, and one of the gentlemen in the room said, well, we've got a bit of a problem in Cambridge. And he said, per one hundred, Cambridge has the largest number of sexual predators living in Cambridge. And I thought, about eight, nine years ago, thought back, I said, more years than that, or five or a year ago, my wife felt very active. Four thousand, it was, at that point in time, I have a minister's up, presented different stories, churches and these people, and they, they'll pose. My question is, does this board be, and we're letting any input, my question is to buy Dane County's board dump at Predators here. And Jefferson is a one dump Predator here, and we happen to be written on here, and it's convenient for opposers, we're out there, right, the ninth. And we happen to be a brother picking sounds, you know, I'm just curious, I'm not asking you to come out there and do something, but I want to know if the board has, I'm just asking your selection. Instant put, are you not ever contacted, or are these people, just any, should them? And that's a question, or if you can resolve that, I'd be happy to take that back to my board, church, and you present that.
Thank Paula, since we've been on, has that subject ever been breached by?
Since I've been on board, nothing has ever come.
Good problem to speak to as well. I think the only time I've ever heard about a sexual predator has been at Oakland Board Meeting. I think, only, the only time I've ever heard anything brought up about a sexual predator in prison, the area, has been Oakland Board Meeting. Never, never here in Cambridge.
There are fourteen living here in Cambridge right now. Ever here in Cambridge. We're seeing three, or fourteen living here now.
But I'm just saying, it's like, for Ben, that's been breached to us.
Or, I mean, I don't think Cambridge wants to be known as the, the predator capital of the city, or I stayed with, I'm just going to think. And it's going to happen at the basis, we are right now, this was per one hundred, if you go and check, that, that has come down from eighteen, eighteen, about thirty months ago. So it's, having your natural, being your agenda, you know, it's a time, we had your reputation as a number one city. And one tree, some wood, and all of that, you don't think they want the, they still, it's along with all of them, it's there.
Are these people that paid their dues, done their time? Are these people, they've done the time, and they're due, have done their time?
Yeah. I can hold it against them, because, but all, they're not allowed within, any school, the church, there are no kids. So, yeah, I know, I'm some, I fear, but I didn't know what the board has.
So legally, legally, no, legally, the communities cannot veto, anyone, they, they are right to live wherever they want to.
That's a nice summit, and I enjoy it.
I'm not arguing, I'm just stating the legal, the legal, it has to be noted, but, but other communities cannot, like, the community boards, community themselves cannot veto. When individual chooses. That's why I'm going to answer the question, is.
So, you know, county doesn't want any living there, they can ship all, if they want.
I think it's, they choose where they're going to live, the individuals to choose, they, as long as it's with shoes, if they're, whether it's the, the, or their, you know, what is their, their, then.
Don't you think it, seriously, don't you think it, the president, Jefferson, and Dane County, because we happen to be around, I'm a lot saying. If you want, for any people, we put them far away from the city, you can't, you, Cambridge is dumping ground, is what this, you know. As I stand here, you probably can't do anything about it, and I know all of the, I. And I know all of the, I'm very, I like to do it.
Yeah, I was arguing, I was just.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, if you have children going to elementary school, I mean, I just assignment.
All right, any other comments? All right, now we're going to move to the refurbished staff.
Um, Lucy, did you hear from the last board meeting? Did you get confirmation that the Lucille circle thing did not include, just the vacation, did not include?
I'm waiting to hear back from Dana reporting that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm staying, we hear from.
Okay, any future agenda items?
If we could update about this, we're pretty phase three.
There's no update right now. It was just in the, it's just the pre-development and, um, just now on the development. It's in, we don't choose to man forward.
Okay.
We're waiting for, they.
To summer prairie phase three.
It, it has been, um, I, I get an update to the trust, it's just to let guys, it's not, I've shocked when it finally gets there. Um, there's so many developments, just that it's not, it's pre-development, we're not ready to sort of plaintiff commission and ready to the village board. But there's still many means and processes just to get there. And so at the, the most time we met with the listener of the property and our, I gave that between myself, the events from Prop SA. Gave them all the steps and requirements that, um, between self aren't needed to, to move forward and so on. Believe five or two, they think it was going to be a 2026 when they really wanted to start correctly, they do it again. And you break.
Is that south away that we drive to? So that, that's Big Woodside. That's, well, facing, facing your house, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what development in there.
Yes.
That's been seen for a long time.
I remember seeing, you know, a few, yeah, a couple of months ago that you had, we're just meeting them and there's this.
Nope, thank you. Yep, a couple of years ago. And then, yeah, so, uh, I put on here, Kate from Village McCarland, senior and Rachel services will be pending. Um, the next meeting to do a presentation to the same afternoon, did receive a call from the gentleman, you know, Hannah Make it. He has media when I already said, and I call that's been sent to the old pass, he not his name, he says he escaped the meeting. But I need to set up a phone call with him tomorrow, um, and just to touch base, I have not talked to him. But when he wanted to make sure that to set up media for success, when she's eventing the board regard, their son position. Then my college president did not, we didn't include all the few meetings, so we have an X on November 3rd at 9:30 PM. Means we have plan commission November 10th of, uh, November 3rd at 5:30 PM, village board meeting, our joint enforcement, 11, 11, 6:00 PM. Village Board meeting, 11, 11, 6:30, 7:00 PM, 7:12, 5:32, library board meeting, the joint, is that 7:20 as well? 11, 12, join municipality, is that called 6:30 PM?
Yes.
7:12, fight for an E P S commission.
And it'll be the same form. It'll be the commission and the individual boards. It'll be named, will you post the.
Yep, yep. Then, uh, 7:18, water steward, 6:30 PM, and 11:25, village board at 6:30 PM. I'm walking, just everything I have, unless I'm missing anything. Oh, yeah, Friday, A A S M civil position meeting. Thank you, Paula. Oh, Halloween.
Oh, you're going. I can't data.
Thanks for picking that, Paul. The last week of November, I will be on vacation, so that'll be, uh, the last week not, if it will exist, key weather, Florida, so. Maybe, yeah, it's still bad, it's towards Cuba right now, so. All right, but that'll mean one board meeting. I'll, I'll let you know at a time, so. Uh, I'll take number 15, that would be one.
That'll make a motion, Jern. Jacobson will second.
All right, we have motion in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?